About two minutes, two minutes.
Thanks, Brian. Right, but, but not on, oh yeah, council on aging, okay. Sorry. Okay, right. Alright, so it is, yeah, it's COA, that's where it's looking. Hi, Tom. Good, well, then you're done.
Stand by.
The year before, that was when Stephen got it good again.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Long Meadow Select Board meeting for May 6, 2019. We're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight we have a fairly full agenda. We have a couple of hearings. One is a hearing on liquor license amendment request from the meeting house. Another is if they are here Comcast, I don't know if Comcast is here for you, they are. So, for the continuing hearing, but we also have appointments for town committees and discussion of a few other items such as one day liquor license requests, fiscal year fees, program fees, street closure requests. We also have an executive, an executive session scheduled for at the end of the session. We'll talk more about that as the time comes in. But I'll just ask right now if there's, if there are any announcements from the select board. I have two quick ones. One is that, just to remind everybody at home that there's a town meeting next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, that's Tuesday, May 14 at 7:00 PM. And Long Meadow High School, if you have not seen a copy of the warrant for the town, town meeting, you can pick one up in Town Hall or there's copies available in the library and a couple of other public places around, around town. But again, we invite everybody to attend the town meeting. It's our annual town meeting. We'll be discussing the budget and about 41 other warrant articles at the same time, so please do attend. Prior to that, tomorrow night, at 6:30 PM, there's a planning boards holding up a public hearing on one of the warrant articles. There's a citizens petition warrant article about zoning bylaw change. And so there was a public hearing on that tomorrow, which is mandated prior to the town meeting. Again, 6:30 tomorrow, Long Meadow High School, Room A15, for the, for the planning board. Does anybody else have any other, any other announcements? Okay, just ask if there, just, I'll ask if there are any residents comments. We do have a hearing requirement at, at 7:10, so we will cut them off and recontinue. Is there any, any public comments, please? For the record, state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Marantz and I live at 117 Rugby Road. I'm speaking tonight, excuse me, as a town resident and as chair of the Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group, whose members have grave concerns about the Tennessee Gas Metering Station, proposed for Long Meadow Country Club property and the high-powered Columbia Gas Pipeline that would attach to it. Though our members have addressed concerns at previous speak outs, I'd like to note that one of those concerns, the issue of transparency, continues to frustrate us and other town residents. There's something fundamentally wrong about the fact that two private entities, the Long Meadow Country Club and Tennessee Gas, can engage in a transaction that profits them but could potentially damage not only a town neighborhood, but the town itself, without any public discussion of the matter. So once again, I'm requesting that select board members and our town manager extend the courtesy of apprising us of the status of this project. As a reminder, I'd like to mention that Long Meadow isn't the only community in Western Mass facing gas expansion. In fact, Columbia Gas's plans are area-wide, targeting North Hampton, East Hampton, Holyoke, Springfield, West Springfield, and Agawam. Though the specific plans differ from town to city, all communities have faced the same non-response to questions and shifting reasons for the need for such expansion. One of the reasons for changing those rationales is the fact that leaders from two of the seven communities have now publicly opposed gas expansion projects, thus eliminating markets for the gas companies. The first to do so was North Hampton, whose city council unanimously passed a resolution rejecting fossil fuel expansion in favor of a policy that promotes renewables. Three weeks ago, Holyoke Mayor Alex Morse joined the opposition by stating that he has a duty to oppose pipeline expansion projects and champion alternative means for meeting energy needs. And it looks as if West Springfield may soon follow suit, as both State Senator Welch and State Representative Finn have publicly opposed Columbia's plans for their community in response to constituent protests. Though this sounds like good news to those of us concerned about the negative impacts of fossil fuels, what these decisions have meant for Long Meadow is that Columbia Gas is now upgrading its pipeline plan for our town. At a recent meeting with outgoing CEO Stephen Bryant, we learned that Columbia now plans to build a 16-inch pipeline down Shaker and Laurel Streets with gas running at a pressure of 200 PSI, quite different from their original plans. So, in the interest of transparency and in the light of our concern about Columbia Gas's new plans, I ask that members of the select board find answers to the following questions that I hope you will share with your constituents. Number one, is the select board aware that the Tennessee Gas Metering Station will be housed in one building on a quarter acre of land and that the remainder of the two-acre lot will be occupied by Columbia Gas buildings and equipment? Number two, has the select board pushed for Tennessee Gas to guarantee in writing that additional gas infrastructure, such as a compressor station, an additional meter station, and/or any other equipment that increases the size or power of the facility, will not be added to the station? Number three, is the select board aware that even though Tennessee Gas currently identifies the proposed station as nothing more than a pipe and a flange, its presence will permit a significant expansion of gas pipeline in a residential neighborhood? Remember that the new plan is to have a 16-inch backbone, high-pressure, 200 PSI main coming out of the interconnect at the LCC meter station that will pass north through town to Springfield. This is very different from what Columbia Gas proposed months ago. Finally, is the select board aware of the noise, odor, and methane emissions coming from the Columbia Metering Station located on East Long Meadows Shaker Road? How can our residents be guaranteed that the LCC meter station won't develop these harmful environmental problems? With this last question in mind, I'll end by calling on the select board and the town manager to vote at the May 14 town meeting in favor of Article 42 that contains zoning bylaws establishing stringent emission standards for any gas facility built in our town. Such an action will go a long way in reducing the anxieties of many town residents who have been left too long in the dark about this important matter.
Thank you, Mrs. Marantz. If you want to leave a copy of that with a clerk here, we'll make sure the select board gets that.
Thank you.
So are there any, any other public comments? No, seeing, seeing none. I'm gonna see if the folks from Comcast are here. I believe, you know, if you want to come forward, it's a minute or two early, but by the time we get settled, we'll get going. I'm just, you know, motion to, we never really closed the hearing, so I guess we're okay. We're just gonna reconvene the hearing that we suspended previously. But if you will, just for the people at home, introduce yourselves and let us know what's going on, please.
Certainly, good evening, and thank you again for continuing the meeting tonight. My name is Eileen Leahy and I'm a senior manager of government relations for Comcast. My office is in Springfield, and with me is Ray LaBord.
I'm a construction specialist in the construction department.
When we were last here, we were requesting permission to place a pole on the corner of Park and Converse Street. At that time, the board had asked if there's any other alternatives rather than placing an actual pole on the street, given the fact that, I believe the concern was there are no poles on that, that street. We did look at alternatives as requested by the board. Mr. LaBord did contact Columbia Gas about the possibility of going underground there at Converse Street, see if that was a possibility. And what we found out, that it wasn't a possibility because there's an old gas line and a new gas line. And appeared they may be unsure if the old gas line is offline and there could be concerns if we dug, if we bore down into the road that it could, you know, explode the pole or something.
Correct. Usually we don't bore under a gas line. Usually you expose it so you can see it, so prevents any safety issues. The gentleman I talked to from the gas company said that they couldn't confirm whether that line was actually still not in service anymore or not. He told me that the line, the new line was energized, energized, charged with gas. And the concern was also brought up with directional bores. The council had asked that we check into that, which we did. We were told that it could be possible, but they were concerned over the roadbed and with it not making it. They could, couldn't guarantee they could make it across it without doing any damage to the roadbed and the existing inner structure under the road. And that was, that was their main concern, plus the gas line not being able to tell us if that is an active or disconnected line. He said it could have went to low pressure and he was supposed to check into that for us and we've been waiting for several weeks for them and several calls have gone unanswered.
So, so again, we're asking if we can have permission to place that pole, which will allow us to service the customers.
Correct. The customers that are fed from the easement on Converse and Brittany Road. And it's, it's become a service issue. A lot of the folks are really having a problem in there and we'd like to get that resolved as much as possible for them. It's losing service has been an issue and with phone and internet service unavailable to them at times.
Does anybody, is there anything else you want to add at this point? Or I assume you're, therefore you're renewing your original.
Right, we're renewing our original petition to place this, at that pole. And I will know, I believe there is another pole about a block or so down the street in Converse.
It is, and that is on the corner of Normandy. But that is set out toward the tree belt area, whereas we plan on setting ours to the backside of the tree belt, more out of sight than out by the roadway where you can see it.
Does anybody have any questions at this point?
Yeah, I have, I have one question. I'm really surprised the gas company couldn't tell if there's, it's an active gas line.
Yeah, that, you, us also. We've, like I said, we have asked several times, reached out to them. I wrote them a letter, a form of letter, sent it to them and we still haven't received anything back from them.
Which is, is it higher or lower than the old one?
That, they wouldn't even answer, he couldn't even tell me that. The new line is plastic, the old line is steel. That's, that's what I've got from them. And they said that, consider both charged until they, we hear different from them.
Till you hit it, huh?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's what we don't want.
That's what we don't want to see happen.
I just, I just have a quick question. How is service currently going to these residences?
It is, it is fed with a temporary service feed, the size of your coaxial cables here on the floors. That's the, the reason the problem is.
But, but what's the route that's feeding them?
It is feeding the original easement route, which is coming through from, from Normandy, from the first house on Normandy Road.
So it's coming from the, from the west instead of, and you're looking to come from the east.
Correct.
Why wouldn't you just parallel that with the new, with the new cable?
We could not get the easement from that gentleman.
It's an easement issue, we weren't able to obtain an easement from the property owner and without that easement, we can't continue our line in that direction. So we need to come in a different direction.
Don't you have an easement that allows your current wiring to be on there?
All the easements were dating back to early light fixture easements. Therefore, it's not an official new, he's slow to speak, easement, not recognized.
And we were able to obtain easements from coming from the other direction from the property owner. So it's, it's a cleaner route and it just makes more sense.
Well, makes more sense to you, it doesn't make more sense to me.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm just wondering if the town can't somehow facilitate getting an easement, but maybe they can't from a, from a private homeowner and get an easement for the cable to come in, so it's not going across.
They grant those easements for us to use, they'd have to grant Comcast the easement.
Right. Tom, what are you gonna ask?
Well, so you can't negotiate with the property owner? I mean, is this a concern about paying them more money to get the easement?
He wouldn't allow us on his, on his property. I believe the last time I approached him, he said he didn't have Comcast, he doesn't want Comcast, he doesn't want us on his property and he doesn't want anybody going to the pole in his backyard with a ladder anymore. And if we were on his property, he would call the police.
And, and you guys made financial offers?
He won't even talk to us, sir.
He wouldn't talk to you at all?
He, he, we would attempt to conversation, so.
So the, so we have to look at digging up a main street?
No, no, they're gonna put it across the street, Tom, but.
No, we, we don't want to do any damage to Converse Street.
You go over the thing and then, but if the gas company is not using that pipe, could, could the cable go through that pipe?
Through the gas, well, the grass pipe is running east-west, whereas we have to cross north-south.
Oh, okay. Alright, so that's not a help either.
Yeah, alright. I don't have any other questions, I don't know if anybody else has any comments.
It's like a horror story. I mean.
It definitely is, we have a lot of folks who have seen it to a gentleman tonight.
If I was sitting out there in the audience and had never been in this town before, I'd say, what?
We actually ran into one of the customers in that area.
Yeah, he's present today.
They're refusing them guys to go on their property.
Yeah.
We gotta, we gotta scroll eight of our wires, any kind of rain, there's no cable, no phone, no nothing. And we want that pole there so we can get our stuff straight. Steve will call us.
Folks, excuse me, it's a public hearing, but it's not a, it's not a public hearing, so. It's a hearing for Comcast, but not a public hearing, I should say. So I appreciate your concerns, but I think we're gonna work through this. So Marie?
Move to approve the petition?
Yeah, we're supposed to close the hearing first, but that's okay.
Move to close the hearing?
Yeah, there's a motion, motions made and seconded all in favor of closing the hearing. Motion unanimous five to zero is made by Marie and seconded by Rich Foster. Okay, is there any other comments now that the hearing closed, Marie, do you wanna?
Move to approve the petition?
Second.
Motions made and seconded, any other comments? I guess my only.
I can't believe that we can't get this individual to, so we didn't have to, because like you said before, Mark pointed out that there's, there's no cables going across Converse Street. They could put in a larger cable that would solve this problem and we have one person who is sort of holding up the works, it's, it's too bad. And there's nothing the town can do to, no, it's his land, he can do.
Welcome to Long Meadow Town.
I mean, you can turn down the petition and have four residents not have cable TV, I guess, is what it comes down to, right? We're reading this poll for four, to feed four, four houses. Oh, it looked like it was.
Well, that's just a drawing, sir. There's actually six, nine, there's about 12 residents total.
Okay, alright, thank you.
It looks like one of the residents is a volunteer for cable TV.
I don't know. Alright, are there any other comments, question? I'm gonna call for a vote, all those in favor of approving the petition. Any opposed, the motion passes five-zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your help in here.
Appreciate you taking a second look at it.
Not a problem at all.
We appreciate everybody's help here, thank you.
Just a quick comment. Next time, when I looked at the folder, it was empty, I would have had to go back to the other.
Yeah, that's what I did.
If we could continue, next time, put the material in the packet again.
Right, okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's what I did, I just called up the other.
Yeah, I know. I would have had to dig back.
Oh, alright, thank you. We're gonna, we have a next scheduled, our, I think it's semi-annual, but it might be quarterly, interviews for town, town committees and appointments. As soon as I call that up, we're gonna hopefully get started and get some folks up here. So, we're just gonna start with the audit committee, there's Nahal Patel and Bill, is Jim in here? Oh, Jim, I'm sorry, yeah, we've got. It wasn't bright enough, I'd like to, we're gonna start out of line. We're gonna call up Jim Russell, Council on Aging. It wasn't green, Jim, I didn't see their jacket. Jim, you're here in your, as an application for the Council on Aging's three-year term.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and is there anything you want to tell us in support of your candidacy or your application?
Well, I guess my main comment is, I totally enjoy volunteering in the town. Get great satisfaction for the results at the different committees I've been on. And served on two building committees for a new adult center with Mary Beth Bergeron as the chair, which I totally enjoyed. Being on the Council on Aging and moving forward with the expected building of a new adult center shortly, I think I can bring to the table my years as a businessman to the town to get the best bang for our buck for a new adult center. End of story.
Thank you, Jim. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Russell that haven't been asked in the last 15 or 20 years that he's come before the select board? Jim, thanks so much. The, the process, just for people at home and unfortunate, you know, it's, people have to come into them. Our charter requires that people come here for, for interview of some kind or another and we will vote at our next meeting on appointments. There are no appointments made tonight, so I want everybody to understand that. Jim, thanks so much for, for coming by. At this point, I, I will call up Nahal Patel and Bill Skiri, both are applying for the position on the audit committee. If you might as well both come up at once, so we can work through this. And if you don't mind, just one by one, Bill, start, just introduce yourself. You're, you're an incumbent, tell us a little bit about the, your application.
Actually, I go by my middle name, which is Chris. My name's Chris Siri. I am a CPA in Connecticut, although my CPA is inactive. I am an incumbent, but I was here about two months ago to get that. So, haven't actually done any meetings yet. But I have five years' experience in municipal audit. The rest of my time has been spent in financial accounting, internal audit, and various subjects, working with audit committees for the various corporations I've worked for. And, I don't know.
No, that's, that's enough. We don't have to, we don't need the 20-year resume, the one, two-year resume is fine.
Hello, I'm Nahal Patel. I'm actually new in town. I moved to Long Meadow, we bought a house about a year ago and we moved in last July. I have a five-year-old son who goes to Blueberry Hill School and a daughter who goes to Montessori. And I'm interested in applying for the audit committees because of my professional background in the defense industry, being highly ensuring that we're compliance with our government policies and rules and regulations and running programs, US Navy programs and Air Force programs. I figured I wanted to get involved in the town committee to just serve. And I've, in the past, living in Los Angeles, I've been a Rotarian there, supporting the local community. And I'm looking to join Long Meadow Committee to kind of take on my professional experience, ensure that we're aligned, our audits, we're compliance with the government policies and streamline our processes to ensure that we're gaining public confidence, you know, that wherever we're spending our money is the right place where it's going and we're compliant.
I want to thank you for volunteering in the town of Long Meadow. Welcome to the town, even, you'll find out after you're 12 or 15 years, you're still gonna be considered a newcomer, but.
Oh.
Maybe not so much if you get involved, but, no, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for you?
I would just say that there are two one-year terms and there are two three-year terms. Do you have any preference?
Don't give them a choice, just.
No, just looking to get involved.
I would prefer the two-year choice.
Don't give them a choice.
Rich? Yeah, I noticed on your application, you put in for Audit Committee, Cultural Council, and Finance Committee.
Correct. So, in the audit and finance, for me, those are my day-to-day things that I manage in my programs, that I can comply with, you know, immediately tap into it. Cultural, I'm also part of my committee, you know, in an Indian community center where we encourage to kind of like express our culture to our kids, you know. So, being part of the Long Meadow and knowing that we're gonna be here for a long time, it'll be nice to be part of the cultural committee and understand, you know, not just the Indian culture, but like surround with all of the other culture and how to be embracing that and encouraging our children to hold on to those roots and be the diversity.
I guess my question was, you put in for three committees?
Oh, because I was in charge when I was gonna get into, I thought I could qualify into all those three areas, so.
Well, in fact, you can qualify, I'll clarify, you can qualify, you can join the Audit Committee, we could appoint you to the Audit Committee, and we could appoint you to the Cultural Council, or both. But if you're appointed to the Finance Committee, which is not a committee of the select board, it's an independent committee, that appointment is by the town moderator, the chair of the Finance Committee, and our town treasurer, those are the three, or CFO, excuse me. Those are the three people who appoint. Once you're on, if you're on the Finance Committee, you're not eligible to participate in other, in other committees, so.
While you're a member.
While you're a member of the Finance Committee, right.
That's exactly what I was gonna say when he jumped in.
Well, I will still go back to, based on my experience, you know, managing financial state today and making sure that we're compliance with our government rules and regulations in the defense industry. If there is an opportunity for both, if I had to pick, I'll pick Finance Committee. But if there is one or the other that's more open, I'm happy to be in the one that's available.
Paul, do you know when appointments with the Finance Committee will be made?
We would do the interviews beginning in June and we make an appointment for July 1st, sometime in the latter part of June.
So in this case, I guess if she was put on one of the other committees, she'd just resign that committee assignment?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
We will meet, I'll contact you with me in, the interviews will be set up for early part of June. I think applications are due to the end of the month.
Yeah, there is. Yeah, yes, she is. She, this is an interview for the Cultural Council, right now, as she's sitting here, so.
She's, I think she's already interviewed for Cultural.
Yes, I was gonna say.
Apparently so. Any other questions? No, okay. Thank you both for. Thank you both very much for coming again. We'll make our appointments at the next meeting. Dr. Eisenstein? Just introduce yourself just quickly.
Barry Eisenstein. It's my, living in Long Meadow for 40 years. Been on the Health Committee a number of years, and I'm applying again, and I think this'll be my last term. I'm getting, I, we need some new blood, I think, eventually, and so, but I'd like to serve one more term. Need to keep Dr. Appleport and Beverly Herschorn in line.
And are there any questions for Dr. Eisenstein?
I've always felt the Board of Health needs a primary care doctor. I'm both a primary care and endocrinologist, and I think the input's important.
So, I guess it's not, it's somewhat of a question. I assume that, I know that as a member of the Board, and more sayings for the folks at home, you're aware that, that we're undergoing some preliminary discussions right now, maybe more than preliminary, with East Long Meadow about summer. Do you have any thoughts about that?
I was there.
Okay.
At the meeting. Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
You want to finish that, so everybody can know what we're talking about?
Sure, we, thank you. We're, the preliminary discussions with East Long Meadow are about merging and forming a single Board of Health with something that would be more effective and efficient in both communities by having perhaps the one director of the Health Department and then split some other things. Go ahead.
It's a shared services arrangement for an intermunicipal agreement. We would still have our Board of Health, they would still have their Board of Health, and they would be independent policymaking and enforcement bodies in each town, but the Health Department would be consolidated.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for being part of this, because whenever we have a transition, it's nice to have people who have experience on the Board, so thanks for volunteering again.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Again, we'll let you know. Next on our list is Mary Beth Bergeron, who's applying for the Building Committee position.
Mary Beth Bergeron, 497 Inverness Lane, Long Meadow.
I'm speechless.
Speechless.
So am I.
Can I ask Mary Beth that question?
No, not until she gets to say anything she wants to.
Oh, I think you have my application in front of me. I would like to continue to serve on the Building Committee.
Thank you.
Now, you can ask. As a full disclaimer, Mary Beth and I were out looking at a job this afternoon, so that was, that was a humorous move. Mary Beth, I, I happen to have the honor to work with Mary Beth quite a bit on the, on the liaison for DPW construction on the Building Committee, and I can contest to her professionalism, eagerness, sometimes overzealousness, but it's all towards the betterment of our community. I'm thrilled that she's coming back and wanting to sign up and go for another, what, six years this time? No, the three, but no, I, I would fully, fully embrace and endorse her. She's excellent member of the Committee, and it provides leadership, too.
The only thing I do is invite you to maybe hang around a little bit more. We have a...
I understand.
An agenda item having to do with the DPW site that we might want your contributions to. Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, next request is for Albert Laxo, next application, who's the current Chair of the Conservation Commission, who is applying also for a three-year renewal to the position of Conservation Commission. Mr. Laxo, please introduce yourself.
Al Laxo, 162 Crescent Road. Been a resident of the town since 1964, and I've been on the Conservation Commission since 1994. And needless to say, after 25 years, the reason why I keep doing it is I believe in the mission of the Conservation Commission, and we've got a number of projects underway that I would like to see them move forward to completion. So, I'm applying for another three-year appointment.
Anybody have any questions?
I just have a comment. I'm amazed at your knowledge, the depth of your knowledge in town. I don't think there's anyone in all of Long Meadow who understands every single piece of property that conservation covers.
Thank you for the compliment.
Thank you very much for all your years of service.
Just to point out, the, the work of the Conservation Commission does take a lot of study because we have a, a state law, we have a town law, we have state regulations, we have town regulations. It takes a long time to work your way through to get some understanding of all the permutations involved in there.
Is there still a plan to, to build that viewing station down off Park Hall Road?
The project has been approved for the Fish and Wildlife, and they intended to get it started this spring, but they're trying to put it over the old Bernie Road. But the interesting thing is that their property line is right in the middle of the road. So, they would like to get a little of townland next to it, and they said that they would be approaching the Town Manager to see if they could get at least a small section of town to get better access to the viewing station.
I think we have a draft lease that's being reviewed.
The only thing, and Al, I also want to make, repeat Marie's comments. Thank you, because it's hard work. I know it's taken me a while to learn that if you go before the Conservation Commission, it's the only one where you go before, and if you ask them for something, they give you a negative determination. It's good. So, took a while to...
Just to keep you thinking.
Just to keep you thinking. So, anyway, Al, thanks so much for coming in. Again, we'll make our appointments next, at the, at the next meeting. Next on our, on our list is Clifford Scott, who's applied for a position, there's a vacancy on the Historic District Commission. Mr. Scott?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Cliff Scott. I live at 797 Long Meadow Street. I'm a relative newcomer to Long Meadow. I've lived here, it'll be five years in August, when we've been in town. I'm interested in, in joining the Historic District Commission, because I'd like to get involved in the community, being a relative newcomer to the town. At the same time, I have three kids in, in school, and I work more than full-time, and so we've kind of got our feet on the ground after five years, and I feel like I'm in a position where I can, where I can step forward and, and help out where help may be needed.
Thank you. I just have one quick question, only because the membership of the Historic District Commission has a certain number of slots and requirements. Is your house considered, or do you live in Historic District, and is your house a historic home?
I do. Both, both are correct.
Okay, all right, so that, just slots you into one category. That doesn't mean positively or negatively. Thank you, just for clarification. Does anybody else have any other questions? No, we don't. Thank you for applying. We really appreciate you applying as a, as a relative new resident. It's great to have people get involved, so thank you.
Thank you.
This is Kukav, Kathy Kukav, Tree Committee.
Mark, before we leave these, I had a question for Al. I didn't tell if, before we finish.
Yeah, we'll do that after. Hi, can you just introduce yourself?
Kathy Kukav. I live on 5 Summit Avenue. When we came to Long Meadow over 40 years ago, I was very impressed by the trees in town. That was one of the things that drew us here. And when we moved to our, the home we're in now, we moved from a property where we had planted over 50 trees on our own, just to, because we liked them. Now, our property has no trees, so I started attending the Tree Committee meeting, just to see if I could steal some ideas of what might work in our backyard. And after going to several meetings, I found out there was an opening on the Committee, and I thought I would apply for it. I certainly can't carry any big old oaks and stick them in the ground, but there are a lot of other activities that, just recently, they had the Arbor Day celebration at Center School, and they needed helpers to work there, and there's a few things coming up in the future that I think I'd be able to help with. So, that is the reason I'm applying.
Thank you. Any questions? Have you, have you been in touch with Mr. Martinelli? Martinelli, our tree board?
I have.
Okay, good. Then you know what the, know, know what the Tree Committee entails?
Yes, I've been to several meetings.
Yeah, okay, great. Any others? Thank you for coming. We'll, again...
Yeah, thank you.
Make any decisions later. And then finally, the, we have two applicants for the Zoning Board of Appeals that they both want to come forward. David Lavenberg, who's our incumbent and serves as Chair, and Suzanne White, who's also an incumbent. Can you just introduce yourselves, Ms. White?
Hello, I am Suzanne White. I live at 240 Long Meadow Street. I've lived in town since 1988, and I am a current member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I would like to continue. It's something that aligns very well with my day-to-day work, which is real estate sales. And I have to laugh, because Dave always says that I've probably been in more houses and on more yards in town than anybody else on the Zoning Committee. So, I can give a wealth of personal historical data, over 40 years selling real estate in this town, of what lot lines look like, and backyards, and sideline setbacks, and, and where garages are or aren't, and where they should be. And I just enjoy the parallel between both uses of my time, and I hope to continue.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I would fully endorse Suzanne's application for the reasons that she stated. She brings some invaluable insight to a pretty diverse Board. Thank you. Thank you. And you want to give, give us a little pitch for you as an... Other than the fact you can't get your way out? Would you like the slider or the curve ball? How many times have you been sued because of your position? Only one, only that once. One time, one time. Oh, you know, listen, you all know that I enjoy it, and I've been doing it a long time. I think the Board does really good work, and I like to think I contribute to that. So, I appreciate the opportunity to, to stay, stay in the game. Thank you. Anybody have any specific questions of our, our Attorney Chair and Ms. White?
It's just, it's nice to have incumbents, you know, continue, want to continue.
Thank you both very much. We, we understand how important it is, the ZBA is for the town of Long Meadow. Appreciate the work you do, so thank you very much. We appreciate the support. Thanks very much, Mark. Steve? Okay, so as I, as I've said now 14 times, we're gonna, we will make appointments at our next, at our next meeting at this point. We have a liquor license amendment hearing that's not scheduled till eight o'clock, because people may be here. It's 20 of. There's a couple of items I want to just cover prior to that under Old Business, and the first one is to endorse a, a uniformed container trash collection program. Marie, if you can just take one, give it to Richard, and you take one, give it to Tom. At the, at the last meeting, we discussed this issue, and there was a general consensus by the, by the Board to support the pursuit of both a state grant and to move toward implementing the uniformed containers through, through the town of Long Meadow. But subsequent, and we said, should we take a vote? And I said, ah, we probably don't need to. But subsequent to that, the Recycling Commission has, has met, and based on where they are and what they need to do, and in terms of applying for grants and moving forward, we thought it was better if we did just through a, a vote memorialize, through a vote, the decisions we made before. And so, because this was thoroughly discussed before, and, you know, we, I decided to put this under Old Business and see if we could get a motion, and, and the motion that I passed out here for consideration is one that's been, already been voted on and endorsed by the Recycling Commission, so...
That's not the Recycling Commission. The team who's, not the Recycling, Mario, a couple of people from the DPW.
Okay.
And Stephen.
Okay, the, the group that's putting together this, this proposal, I apologize. So, I guess I, at this point, can I ask if anybody would feel comfortable putting together this motion?
Actually, I have a question, and I'm glad you're here.
Arlene, you better come to where people can hear you.
I wasn't at that meeting, but I guess there's two concerns I have. One is, what do people do with their old trash barrels? And the second is, if you don't get the grant, can, do we really want to implement this without the grant money? Because then everyone has to purchase it.
First of all, we're scheduled to come in, I think, next, your next meeting, to give a more of a comprehensive plan, an implementation plan for you. We will get the grant. We had the grant, we had the grant last year, and it was giving us $15 a household, and then they, they upped it to $30 per household, so they asked us to withdraw last year's grant and reapply, so we would get the $30 per household for the, toward the barrels. So, I'm positive we'll get the grant. We don't have the grant yet, but certainly we don't need to move forward if we don't get the grant.
And the barrels cost, how much?
We, we've done some preliminary quotes. We haven't, you know, fine-tuned them, so it's about $35 a barrel.
And the extra $5 will be paid for?
We, we...
Do we charge people?
Well, we estimate that by doing this program, we'll save about $46, $47,000 a year on disposal costs, because we're bringing in the...
So, we'll cover it the first year, the, the extra $5, or are we charging the residents?
We're not charging anybody.
Oh, we're not, okay.
The savings will be ongoing, and we figure it'll be paid for completely every first year.
And what do people do with their old trash barrels?
We'll have a plan.
Oh, you will, okay.
We'll, we'll collect them. Many, and East Long Meadow did this, maybe you can speak to that. East Long Meadow did a program where they, where they required people to get different barrels than they had, and in so doing, many people used the barrel that they had for recycling instead of for trash.
Right. They didn't realize that they could use their, they could switch to their barrels, so... Okay. All right, thank you.
But either we'll, we'll take them, pick them up from people that don't want them, well, there'll be an opportunity to use them themselves, and we also have another idea for some reuse of the barrels, but we will take responsibility for that with the residents.
Okay, thank you.
Did they say, did you say you were gonna make a presentation in a couple of weeks?
Yes, Mark said you had too, you had too much on your agenda to do it tonight, so...
So, I was wondering, why do we have this here now?
Because we have to get the grant in.
So, that they can apply for the grant, say that the Select Board endorsed the grant.
You don't have, if you, if it comes in and you don't like it, and you don't sign it, we don't get the grant. This just allows us to complete, complete the requirements of application for the grant.
So, you're looking for the motion?
Yes.
Okay, do we have to, I have to read this out loud? The, "I move, the Select Board endorsed the standardized 35-gallon trash barrel DEP grant application, direct the Town Manager to move forward with its implementation, recognizing this program's consistent with our current curbside trash collection program, and will save the town money on disposal and enforcement."
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any? Rich, if you can share that with Jackie.
He thought, what color are they gonna be?
Pink, no.
Afraid of that.
We haven't, we haven't finalized that yet.
Do you have, do you have, if you have an offer of a color?
All right, is there any other questions, concerns? I know, Tom, you expressed your concerns in the last meeting. You can repeat them if you'd like, or...
No, I, I just, I think people are throwing out the amount of trash they, they make during the week. I don't think we're, people are going overboard.
Okay, so I'll, hearing no other comments or questions?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a comment. I, I'm not in favor of voting on something with so many unknown factors still out there. We don't even have colors, we don't have anything, so I mean, I, it'll pass, but I just, I don't like voting for...
Let me just say, you will have input on all of that.
I know, but not before we vote.
But we're not voting on the...
This doesn't bind you to anything.
Right, okay, well, I, then, then my vote means nothing anyway, then.
Well, should we, it's sort of saying, direct the Town Manager to implement?
No, you can move ahead.
Okay.
It says Town Manager move ahead. Sounds like there's a lot of action items there. Anyway, go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Vote passes three to two with Mr. Foster and Mr. Lucisa opposing it, but the vote does pass. Thank you very much. So, and I'm gonna add for a motion to approve the minutes of April 16?
Some vote.
The second? Motion's made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Lucisa. Are there any other, any comments or questions about the motion? Hearing, no, not all those in favor of the minutes? Any opposed?
I think I was here. Was I? The 16th? I'm saying...
Okay, there's one abstention from the Sangre Edes. Okay. Stephen, can you just, any comments on your very brief Town Managers' Report? I'm trying to just get us through till eight o'clock.
I was gonna report on the information...
I was going to report on the information on the slope issues regarding the DPW. I was not aware that you were going to do something.
No, you, go ahead, Stephen.
So, we discovered last week, and I apologize, no written report. We've been trying to, quite honestly, piece together what's happening out there, and what are possible solutions. And right now, we don't really have quotes, or, you know, any kind of preliminary designs. So, there's really nothing in writing that I could, could report. The drainage, it's really in large, in large part due to drainage work that we did on Dwight Road. We kind of expanded that drainage system because Dwight Road consistently flooded every year. And so, it's accelerated some of the washouts of the dingle that runs on the north side of the site. I mean, it's been washing up for a number of years. I think, if you remember, the first time we walked on the site, we were looking at the DPW, there were signs of washout as well. And our engineers felt like, over time, it'll just find its kind of natural width and depth, consistent with, you know, runoff from the road, and get to a certain point and not, you know, be much worse. That was before we had, you know, historic amounts of rain over the last year or so. And so, parts of the slope, not everywhere, but parts of the slope are collapsing. Large clumps of trees are falling into the bottom of it. We have talked to the conservation commission, to Al, and we do, we do know we need to do something. But it really, it's really primarily a result of drainage from the road as opposed to construction of the new facility. Once the new facility is constructed, we think that by itself is going to improve the situation. But some work on this may need to be done now in the short term, and then I think, long term, it's a, it's going to be a significant project that we'll have to, have to address. But a project's not having a written thing, we just, we're still trying to figure it all out and what it means. And I don't like speculating on cost, or approach, or anything, until I have something that I can, I can look at.
Rich, those pictures you're looking at that we're looking up on the screen?
Yes.
Yeah. I, can I speak?
Go, please.
I, I would, I rarely disagree with Stephen, but I would disagree in a little bit of what the story that he's building up. I didn't find any evidence, reviewing the entire site, that there'd been abnormal wa, or abnormal washwater going down through. And the basis of it, five or six inches up from the original stream bed, there's still loose leaves. What we did find evidence of, significant evidence of, was slopes that had become saturated, and that we'd had slippage. It hadn't undermined, they just pushed and blew out, which is pretty normal for super saturated soils. And right here, you can see, this is an area where the trees have just kind of tipped over. And there's no washing that took place to undermine, they just kind of fell over. There's, there's no evidence of the severe underwash. This, again, is just a general picture. You can see how much debris is in this channel. Like Stephen said, there is a drainage that goes down through the channel, but when we even looked at, up at the road, there's some water coming in from Dwight Road, the Dwight Road complex. And then the other one, appears to be, all the other drainage water is right there local, it's just about three inlets. And when you look right at the, right at the outfall, there's a little bit of water. I showed you today, Stephen, it's about fifteen foot down, you can see where it's washed on the bank. But then it hits solid bedrock there, and it slows down quite a bit. By the time it gets two-hundred foot down, it looks like it flattens out, and there's not a gushing flow. But we have had tremendous rains, like, we've got two inches, four inches of water in the community gardens. First time in ten years I've ever seen it sitting there. It's been there for two months now. Again, you can see down, looking at these pictures, there's no evidence of an actual washout. It's just kind of sluffy, it's sliding down like super saturated soils. This one here is an interesting one. This is, this is a major slough off, or a major failure point. The, this is right on the edge of the DPW site, and you can see there's a concrete area up there, which was an old part of a parking berm or something, and you can see all the concrete and stuff below it. Looks like they had dumped a lot of concrete stuff in there. And we thought, when we looked on the site, that the water had come down and spilled over that edge and super saturated the soils, and it had a blowout. But if you notice up on that top lip, you can see a lot of gravel still laying up there. So, they would indicate there wasn't a lot of water running there. There may have been water spilling over, but it was gentle. But it appears that it's super, super saturated this area, and it was just, it's just a gentle slush down. It wasn't a violent action, it was kind of, you could have played the violins when it slid down.
So, I guess, I just have one quick question, and that is, did we cause this by the construction we're doing at the, at this site?
No.
Was this done because of the construction on Dwight Road?
No.
Or is this just done because of the rain?
Well, mostly the rain, I would say, and the analysis we've done, because Weston Sampson has looked at this from the very beginning. I would say, in part, because of the drainage improvements. And there is less pervy, impervious area because we've cleared the site. But I think, if we had a normal year of rain, it wouldn't be a factor. The, so there's a sock, in fact, you can see in the top right-hand corner, they've kind of pulled it back. But that's, that sock is, runs the whole length of the berm along the dingle. And so, they're really, and you see there's dry leaves and things like that on the, on the, on the dingle side of the erosion control, is what they call it. And so, it's not going over top and going down the hill. It's, we think, we think it's, and I say, we think. We don't, I, we haven't really reviewed the geotechnical results, if they go that deep. But there may be right in that area, can you go back to that other picture, Richard?
Yeah.
So, right in this area here, it appears that it had happened before, and then it was backfilled with all of that stuff at some point in time in the past, which may be, and if you look across the dingle, it's happening on the other side. And so, one of the engineers hypothesized that it's a vein of kind of silty material that's on clay, that's just getting kind of, the water's not receding, and it's kind of pushing it out because of the abnormally high rains.
And that's possible, very possible.
I think the big, the big concern with it is, that clump of trees, it's like the size of a car. So, they're, I mean, they're large, you know, caliper trees, and you see three or four of them in a clump.
This is the same fence that you just saw back here. It's over here, and you can see how clean this bank is. This action just slid right down into the bay, so it wasn't undermining down here, it slid from up here. It was super saturated slowly, hit a slip point, and it just, it just moved down. But Mark, believe me, there's, I just can see any evidence of erosion on that site that would have contributed to this. And there's no evidence whatsoever that there's enough water coming from the Dwight Road project to have caused this. Because if it had up near the end, we'd likely have a thirty-foot hole, thirty-foot deep hole, and there's not. There's no evidence of that massive waterfall.
I mean, I mean, to me, there's-
Saturation of soils.
There's not much of a question that something's got to be done about it. The big question for me is, what pocket does it come out of?
Like I said, I think that we are trying to figure that out.
So, we're not prepared to move right now?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to speculate and cause unnecessary panic. It is a separate project. It is not an extension of the DPW project. I think that, like I said, if you look at it before, when we acquired the site, and now, you know, there are parts that, like I said, that we may need to look at on a timeline, on a shorter timeline, but we are working with the, our engineers are trying to come up with some ideas that we can bounce off of the DEP.
I have full confidence that you would have had the exact same outcome if you hadn't touched the site.
Yeah.
The exact same. I think it's just the massive rainfalls that we've had. And it's not over. We, we heard a tree go down today as we were standing there. A large one back in the woods, so it just, trees are still toppling over there. The root systems are loose.
Marie?
Is this part of the same vein or concerns that the Glen Meadow Villas said they were having trouble with erosion on their side of the dingle? Or is this completely separate?
I think it, it depends on what the soil conditions are and how that was constructed. And I mean, yeah, I mean, I think there's, whatever the cause, there's more water passing through there simply because of more rainfall and more severe weather events. I mean, this is something we talked about as part of our MVP process. Storms are becoming more severe, and incidences of, you know, an inch or two-inch an hour rainfalls are becoming more common. And that's what sometimes can cause conditions like this. But I'm not firsthand familiar enough with Glen Meadow's thing to say, one way or the other.
You know, there are these underground streams all through town. In my neighborhood, this kind of thing happens constantly.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, part of that is our own hydrological conditions under the surface, too. And I think Rich is probably right. Would it have happened, you know, this year? Or if we had never touched the site, would it have happened this year? Maybe, maybe not. But I think eventually, it was, it was going that way.
I don't think you did anything on the site that, that obviously contributed to it. We looked it over. We were there an hour and a half today looking for any evidence. And there's no evidence that it was water coming off that site.
Well, there is on that one area, though.
But, but there's water coming out, what, twenty foot down?
No, no, it was probably down maybe four feet. You weren't, you weren't there on Friday.
Oh, when you were there, yeah.
When on Friday, there was definitely water coming out. Four feet down, you know, probably, you know, possibly an underground stream.
It's coming out, so we did the cuts on the south side of the site, where there's a grade change to where the, like, Yeshiva Academy is on Conver Street, and water seeping out of that as well.
Yeah, this is, this is the picture she was referring to.
Right.
And I'll walk up and show the people where she's saying approximately, it was dry when we were there today. But apparently, last Friday, there was water approximately in this area.
No, it was further up.
Well, it's only about four foot down.
No, no, the water was trickling out here. I was there Friday as well. It was cut, actually, you can see-
Well, there was two spots, isn't there?
It was, it was coming out here, so there was a cut down here in the same soil. But it wasn't worse today than it was on Friday.
Well, there's, there's a little star, but I wonder if it's gone back. Water up here, too, right? That was the second one.
Which is not that uncommon right now.
The answer, the answer is, we're not going to do anything tonight.
Right.
We're going to be aware of it and continue to try to find the-
We are talking about an action plan. It's not uncomplicated, but we are trying to figure something out.
Well, can I ask, are we going to secure an engineering firm or to look at this? I mean, what, what's the plan?
We've been talking about that as well. Weston Sampson, they are civil engineers. They have looked at it. They've got some ideas. We could go to an outside firm or a specialist for second opinion. We have to budget for that. But we are, like I said, just trying to get our heads around it and-
Well, if we're going to have Weston and Sampson, there'll be an upcharge for that, too, because that's beyond the scope.
Right. So, we may, we may, we may look for a sec, we may look for a second opinion.
Yeah.
So, maybe specializes in this.
But it is a separate project, totally, and it's going to be expensive.
Captain Road.
Yeah, yeah.
Avondale Road. We've had a bunch of these washouts in town, so.
Morning, morning side, first to, you know.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I get it. Okay, thank you. Which brings us to nearly eight o'clock, so I'm going to call up the folks. We have a liquor license hearing for the meeting house. If I can have the principals come up, please. I just want to lay out the, the plan here. My understanding is that the, there is a, there are, is an application for three separate changes, and we may handle them separately. The first one is for a change in the manager. The second one is for the adding outdoor seating or patio outdoor service to the liquor license, which was not part of the original liquor license that was granted. And the third is a request for change in hours. And I believe that those are the three separate requests that we have for us. So, what I'd like to do is just turn it over to you for, well, actually, we're going to open the hearing. This is a formal hearing, so I need a motion to open the hearing.
Some vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Low and seconded by Mr. Lucusa, all in favor. Motion's four to zero. Mr. Foster is out of the room temporarily. So, the meeting is, the hearing is open, and sir, if you could just introduce yourself and kind of lead us through this.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Robert Schmidt. I'm an attorney with an office in Springfield. I'm standing in for Dan Kelly tonight. All the principals from Long Meadow Hospitality LLC, which is the formal name of the meeting house, are here. With regard to the alteration of the premises request, we'd ask that that should be tabled at this time. That has to be before the planning board, is my understanding, and Attorney Kelly's going to deal with that at a later date. So, moving on from that, I'll start with the change of manager. The new manager that we're requesting is Christine Gendron. She is here tonight. You'll see from the paperwork that we filed, she was a tax manager. She worked at Gerber Scientific. That was from 1991 to 2016. From 2016 forward, she's been a manager at JLL Realty Advisors. She obviously has extensive management experience and is qualified, no criminal history to speak of, and she's certainly an appropriate person for the job, and we ask that she be approved. She is here, should you have any questions for her.
Okay.
And I can move on to the next, if you don't want to ask questions at this point.
Yeah, well, I'd, we'd like to ask questions of her, so if you don't mind just coming up. You just pull up a, pull up a chair, and the microphones don't do much in the room, but they're for the folks at home. But just, that's the only reason we ask you to be close enough to a microphone. If you can just share that with her a little bit. Does anybody else have any questions? The only reason, and I don't really have a question, it's so much of a comment that other folks have heard the last time we're through here, came through here, which is the liquor license process in Long Meadow. We take our liquor licenses seriously. We're aggressive about enforcement. We do random enforcement checks in the town of Long Meadow, and we just wanted to face-to-face let you know, if you become the manager, which it sounds like you will become the manager, that we take our liquor licenses seriously, particularly given the location of the meeting house, which is within a half a mile of our high school. So, I just had that comment. Does anybody else have any questions of Ms. Gendron, who's the-
Do you have any direct experience working with people who have drinking issues? Because that'll be part of your job, when people who want to drink, and then you have to tell them no. Do you have any experience with that?
I have, I have worked in the restaurants that are also owned by the principals here, and I have helped out on occasion, and, you know, served in not so much official management capacity, but more as, more of an acting management capacity. And, you know, have seen different situations and, you know, witnessing, you know, witness situations, you know, that would require, you know, someone to make sure, you know.
Is this over the last few months? Because it says you're a realty-
Over the past couple of years, and part, oh, not in a full-time capacity.
Yeah.
But when help is needed and filling in for managers.
All right. I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not hiring you.
No.
But our concern, of course, is the safety of our residents.
Absolutely.
And one of the biggest judgments-
And that's certainly our concern.
Yeah.
We certainly make sure that everyone who is employed for us, who is behind the bar, who's actually there to serve, is TIPS certified and is fully understand and where, you know, to check if someone is intoxicated, to cut them off, to make sure they do not leave the restaurant unattended, without a ride. In fact, Long Meadow, as you said, Mr. Gold, it takes it very seriously. We had a random enforcement check in about five weeks into the business with absolutely no incident. Myself, my husband, as well as Chris, we are there seven days a week, pretty much, so we take it very seriously. And we don't just hire someone just to hire someone. We make sure that they have the training, their credentials. If they don't have the experience, we make sure that they get the on-the-job training and know that, that serving someone is, is really a huge important, you know, it could cause them to be liable, it could cause us to be liable, it could cause a serious accident. We don't have that. We are really, as I'm sure you all know, a family restaurant. That's, that's not a game we're involved in. So, we take it highly, highly seriously, as Chris does, as myself, and everyone who works for us.
And the board might remember from the prior hearing that, you know, this is a group of people involved in three different restaurants. It's not just one restaurant. There's a ton of experience here, and Jeanette Norman, the owner, was a VP at Goldman Sachs, and has a lot of experience, has a lot of supervision here.
Yeah, well, it's still very comforting to hear you state, you know, that you have pretty strict policies and that you-
I, I, yeah, of course, I have, I have some. I, we take it really seriously. We don't, we, we, it provides us nothing to make, what, eight dollars on a drink? It's ridiculous. So, I assure you, we take it very, very, very seriously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? What I'd like to do is, even with the hearing open, just, just go ahead and vote, because these are separate applications. Vote separately on this change of manager application, so then we can then move on to the, the next item, unless anybody has any. Do you folks have any objection to handling these separately?
That's fine.
The only thing I did not see in here was Ms. Gendron's TIPS certification. I assume if she's got it, or she doesn't have it, she will, since she's going to be an onsite manager.
Yes.
And I have, somehow it didn't get into our packet. But, so I just ask that we make this, you know, if we do have a motion, that we make a contingent upon that being submitted, just so we know that we've got, the look closed on that.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Is there a motion to approve the transfer of management?
A motion to accept the transfer of management.
Contingent.
Contingent upon the, the turning in of the TIPS certification of the new manager.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Lucusa, seconded by Mr. Foster. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Motion passes five to zero. So- So, thank you. So now we're going to take up the issue of, and if I heard correctly, the issue of expanding to an outdoor patio is being withdrawn at this point until it goes before the planning board.
Correct.
So, so the next application is for a change of hours, that, that we've had a request for the... And I'm just trying to pull up the, the formal request here. So we've had a request to extend hours to, was it...
It's for midnight, Sunday through Thursday, and 1:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday.
Correct.
Right.
Now, you've heard, obviously they haven't had any issues with their license. You know, you, you're probably familiar with the restaurant at this point. It's a beautiful restaurant, they have really good food, they're successful. And so they're hoping to have longer hours, so they can have more customers, make more money, and be a benefit to the town presumably, in additional tax revenue. And certainly to compete with other similar institutions or restaurants in different towns, in different areas. They need to be open a little bit later in order to compete. And again, since they've had no issues with this license, I would suggest to the board that it's appropriate, and this is a very responsible establishment, and there's no risk to the town or the population based on extending the hours.
Thank you. Is there any other, any questions or comments? Anybody else?
No, I would, I would comment. I really don't care about competition with other towns. You know, we are a pretty quiet little town. We like, I think most of the residents like it that way. And, you know, if we expand into midnight, 1:00 o'clock, other folks are going to want to do the same thing. And I believe it would change the character of the town quite a bit. And, you know, I've talked more than once about, you know, our restaurant district becoming a club district. And I guess this would be, for me, this would be the first step to moving in that direction. So I really can't support it.
Also, Chief Stankowitz has some concern about it.
Right. Yeah, just so, for the people at home, including in our packet, was a letter from the police chief. And I'll just read the appropriate paragraph here. It said, "In reference to increased hours of operation," it is my opinion, that's the police chief writing, "that the board consider maintaining consistency of the operation of hours currently sanctioned for all other licensees. Of the liquor licenses approved for the four package stores, 12 restaurant establishments, and one seasonal business, only one is permitted to serve past 11:00 p.m., Max Burger on Friday and Saturday nights until 11:30 p.m. This format seems to work since police response to these establishments for alcohol-related complaints in the last year has been documented at two. Both calls required the presence of a uniformed officer to assist with intoxicated patrons. Although I recognize the due diligence of the owners' managers who ensure that their employees abide by the state liquor statutes, I firmly believe there's a direct correlation to the limited police response and the reasonableness and fitting times that these establishments are permitted to be operational." And so, you know, that was a part of what the police chief submitted. And just so the people at home know, we, I did ask, and Debbie House, who serves as our liquor license clerk or administrator, did include in our packet the hours of all the other establishments in town, particularly those in that same area. Max Burger, Umi Asian Bistro, and The Kitchen for their hours. And as the police chief said, other than Friday and Saturday night, when Max Burger goes to 11:30, all the others are, end at 11:00 p.m. So I just, as a...
Well, in response to that, then I would ask that at least, in the alternative, that we be granted the ability to remain open until 11:30 on weekends. If you're not concerned about competition with other cities, if that's the position, certainly this is, would be unfair competition for the meeting house within Long Meadow itself. And this is a business that's proven to be a successful part of the community and has had no licensing issues. So they should at least be able to compete on level ground with other businesses in town.
Thank you. Marie, were you going to...
That was going to be my question. You're not at 11:30 yet.
Correct.
You're closing at 11?
Yeah.
It's 11 across the board right now, so then we'd be asking for 11:30 on the weekends.
Is there any, so anybody else have any comments or questions?
No, if there are comparable hours to other places, I would support that.
I think I'd say, obviously you guys are the license commission, you know, Max's is the only one at 11:30. Most of them are less than that. So I just would ask for the board's consideration, how, expect that everybody else is going to want to stay up until 11:30.
Yep, right, yeah. Yeah.
Maybe.
What?
Maybe, if you want to work that late.
Well, if they want to be competitive, then that's what they're going to want.
It's six, I mean...
They're going to want to do, but it's difficult, it's difficult to approve it for one and not the other. And just as it's difficult to approve 1:00 a.m. for one and not, and not expect everybody else to want to go to 1:00 a.m., but we've already got somebody at 11:30, and we're not, I guess we're not in a position to cut that, and cut them back to 11:00 o'clock. So, anyway, if there are no other questions for the petitioners, I'm going to accept a motion to close the, close the hearing so we can vote, is there such...
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Foster and seconded by Mr. Lowe. All those in favor of closing the hearing? Mine is, I'll entertain a motion relative to the petition to extend the hours of the Meeting House Restaurant. Marie?
Move to extend the hours of the Meeting House Restaurant Friday and Saturday to 11:30.
P.M.?
P.M.
Okay, is there a second?
No, second.
Motion's made by Ms. Angeliette, and seconded by, by Mr. LaCusse.
I have one question. Do you know if there was any provisions in the Max's on holidays or any thing other than Friday, Saturdays, Stephen?
I wasn't around this before my time.
The answer is, we don't, you know, like, like the Thursday Thanksgiving kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah.
The liquor license system doesn't, doesn't allow that. Doesn't, doesn't provide for that, is the best I can tell you.
I was just wondering in case there was a provision where they'd had extended hours from holidays.
Not aware that there are.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions, concerns? I'll call for a motion on the vote, a vote on the motion. There's, again, the motion is to extend the liquor license hours for the Meeting House Restaurant on Friday and Saturday night to 11:30 p.m. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you very much.
After you've talked to the planning board, I'd probably be back.
We'll see you soon. Look forward to it.
Have a good night, everyone.
Okay, thank you, folks, for working through that. Bill? Did you have...
No, I was just waiting.
Okay, so we're going to move on. We've got the quarterly and cash, and we're just going to go on to the new business. So we're going to do the quarterly cash. Cheryl, if you want to come up here and...
Bless you.
Just for the folks at home, if you can just introduce yourself.
Cheryl Kudnix, Treasurer Collector for the town. I'm submitting my quarterly investment report for the period ending March 31st, 2019. Once again, the town met all the requirements of the investment policy. We transferred the remaining OPEP funds, including a CD that matured for $408,073, and appropriated funds for FY19 in the amount of $481,000 to the State Retire Benefits Trust Fund. Since inception, we have a $60,701 increase. We had a 12-month stabilization CD mature with Belmont Savings Bank for $781,65. And we renewed that CD with Belmont at a rate of 2.75%. I reached out to our banks that were having low interest rates with us, and I was able to get People's Bank to increase the accounts that were 0.25% to 1.29%. United Bank increased their accounts that were 0.05 and 0.19% to 1.88%. And Newburyport Savings Bank, without even reaching out to them, increased their rate from 2.25% to 2.55%. There were other banks that increased the rates, and that's in the report. The interest earned on our bond proceed for this quarter was $84,895. And our net decrease of $2,456,357 was primarily due to the three bi-weekly payrolls in January. And there was $3 million paid for the DPW and DIF on the payables warrant. I will continue to seek the best possible rates and continue to practice safety, liquidity, and yield when investing and paying bills on warrants.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions of our town treasurer about the investment report, Marie?
Thank you for your diligence. You have the phone and asking, that's great. You have made a difference.
You never know what you can get when you go. Hey, Paul, can I just ask you a question? Do you expect we're going to see an equal increase when we go, on the other side of the coin, when we go to borrow?
I pray you know, an increase in the rates, probably, yeah. I don't think it'll be as great as the increase we're getting for the, on the revenue side. But once we go out to bond...
Yeah, we've got a microphone in the building.
Oh, I think once we go out to bond, there'll be an uptick. Again, just not as great as on the revenue side.
That's pretty cool, Paul.
Yeah.
It's like the voice of God.
Cheryl, thanks so much. I think we're all set, right? Unless anybody else has any questions? Thank you for coming by, we appreciate that.
Mark, I do have the liquor license thing, but it reflects the change in the premises. So what I'll do is have Debbie make this correct and circulate it, either at the office for signatures or at the next meeting.
That'd be great, Stephen, yeah.
Because it does reflect the patio, and we, I think, did no action on it.
And the other thing, does it reflect hours on that, too?
It just says hours changed, too, so I'm going to write in 11:30.
Okay, yeah, but we'll, thank you, yeah, we can, so, well, Debbie can notify us when the liquor, when that's ready for signature. We can stop by and make that. Next item is a review of fiscal year fees. And Paul Pesterzak, I think you're kind of, will take the lead on that, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I mean, we've asked the department to look at those fiscal year-based fees. And actually, none of them have made a recommendation to change any of them, with the exception of the ambulance, fire chief will be coming in on the 20th to recommend an ambulance increase. We also have on the agenda for the 20th, the water, sewer, and stormwater fee increases. So those will all be before you on the 20th. But other than that, there's no other increases being recommended at this time.
I guess, you know, I looked through this and saw that many of these fees hadn't been changed since, there was a bunch in 2007. And some of them are nickel-and-dime kind of stuff, and we don't need to. But, you know, did we ever talk about taking a, a look at some of this stuff?
Some of them are set by statute.
Yeah, if you look at, most of those are, if you look to the column, authorization, some of them say CMR, or, we have looked at, we look at all of the fees every year. We look at the fiscal year fees this time of year, and we look at the calendar year fees in December every year. Some of the ones that haven't changed a long time are usually, are like state statute or some other entity.
Okay, there was...
Yeah, some of them are, like Burning Report and Fire, so there are some, 2006.
Where's this?
If you go, if you just go down to the authorization that's blank, and you go to the left, and I just cross-reference 2006, Burning Report, Fire Report, Commercial Plan Reviews, Construction Inspection, some of those appear to be 2006 that haven't changed.
Some of those also, Marie, seem to be fees that I can't imagine there's anybody in town that's, that's actually paying, like the firing of a cannon, although that's long ago, long ago days, I guess we have that, right?
Yeah, every now and then, something happens. But I was just following your recommendation to look at things that haven't been changed in a while.
Tar Kettle.
Tar Kettle, right, that's the one that...
Sewer cleaning fee. That's been there since 2007. I don't know how much that happens.
Anyway, Paul, I appreciate you looking at it. I get the fact that we're not going to get any, any recommendations, and that's fine. I'm not looking to increase fees, but as long as the fire, the fire chief is looking at ambulance fees and water and sewer are going to come before us anyway, so...
Fire Department also has some calendar fees that he wants to implement. He will be bringing those forward in the fall. There's news, he's doing a lot more inspections now with his staff.
At this point in time, it'd be a good idea to mention, I think I'd said it before, I discovered other towns, they don't have false alarm fees. What they do have is if you are tying to the fire department or the police department, you pay yearly fee for the, to the police or fire department. It's an actual burglar alarm or fire alarm fee that's paid. And then each household that has one pays a fee rather than...
Right, I agree.
Just kicking them $25 for false alarms. It's something to consider in the future.
If it's a bylaw, you need a bylaw change.
Right, mhm. But I would look to see what's recommended next. But it's an interesting way of approaching it. And then you don't have the people that end up in crisis that have, because they have a problem with their system.
Yeah, but he also gives them incentive to fix their system if it's broken, when you start charging like that.
Yeah, but we don't have that many of those, do we?
You'd be surprised.
Really?
There's $70,000, I think that comes in from false alarm fees.
Wow, mhm. It'll be worth to analyze the two ways, which way we do better.
Okay, let's, let's move on then to, the next item is, we've got a couple of requests for licenses or other waivers. So the first one's a one-day liquor license for the, for St. Mary's.
Okay, so, for a motion to permit a one-day liquor license for St. Mary's on the, for an event to be held on...
June 12th.
Oh, June 12th, on the margin.
Second.
From 5:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Motion passes, thank you, Tom. There's a, the next one is a request to keep a sign up for greater than a three-day minimum by, for First Church for their tag sale. The sign would be up May 11th through 18th. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. LaCusse and seconded by Mr. Lowe for approving the First Church sign to be up May 11th through 18th at, doesn't even say, oh, three designated locations. And I presume those are the north end of town, the south end of town, and at the traffic circle near the...
It's still a policy, but we stopped approving at the traffic triangle, because Big Y maintains it now. We, other than for town stuff, like the hydro flushing thing is out there, we stopped approving it for private.
Okay, and so that's why I want to make this, this clarification. I'd like to approve just the north and south ends of Route 5, if we could.
And then they usually put one in front of their church, right?
Yeah.
So if you want to make that specific, that's fine, Tom. You want to make it...
They can put it on their property without our permission.
Oh, they can, okay.
Yeah.
So...
So we don't know what the third location is now?
Well, they, we didn't even know where the...
The third location typically the triangle, but we, like I said, we've gotten away from approving it.
Okay. So then I guess I modify then the motion to say that we would approve two signs, one at the north end of town, one at the south end of town.
Okay, motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. LaCusse and seconded by Mr. Lowe for approving a First Church's tag sale sign for the north and south ends of Long Meadow Route 5. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes five to zero. And now we have our annual request for street closure for the Center School Field Day.
I like a...
It's on May 31st with a rain date of June 3rd.
June 3rd.
Is there such a motion to approve that closure of, of that part of Long Meadow Street?
From 9:00 a.m. to 3:15 p.m. Forward motion, on a second.
With the, with the rain date of the 3rd, the 31st with a rain date of the 2nd, of the 3rd?
June 3rd, rain date, yep.
Okay, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. LaCusse, seconded by Mr. Lowe for road closure. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes five to zero, thank you very much. We've got that. The next item on discussion, and Marie, I don't know if you feel comfortable taking a, a lead on this or not, is, and I'm going to, I'm going to give a little bit of background, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
So the, there is now in place a letter of intent between an agreement, actually, it's a signed agreement, between Long Meadow Country Club and Tennessee Gas Pipeline, for Tennessee Gas Pipeline to purchase land onto which to put a transfer, I don't even know, a metering station and a connection system to Columbia Gas that's currently just off Hazardville, part of Hazardville Road. That land is currently zoned recreational, which means they get a preferential tax rating. Commonwealth of Massachusetts offers, has a, a article called Chapter 61B, which says that anytime land is taken out of recreational land use and transferred into non-recreational land use, that the town may, at their discretion... land use, that the town may, at their discretion, purchase that land and take it by, have the choice to take that by, by, I guess it's first right of refusal for the same, the same...
Exercise an option.
Exercise the same option. And so, the question is, does the town of Long Meadow wish to do that on this, on this land? And my recollection is that it's about 2.6 acres, consisting of several parcels. And the, the agreement between Long Meadow Country Club, my liberty to talk about that, I assume that's a public document?
What's that?
The agreement, though...
I think it's been made public, yeah.
Has it? The agreement between Long Meadow Country Club and Tennessee Gas Pipeline, approximately $2.6 million for that, for the purchase of that land. And so, we, as a select board, had a discussion about this option, and one of the things we talked about was that it's expensive. Is it something we want to do? But, more importantly, is it something the citizens want to do? And so, what we discussed was putting a non-binding, the option of putting a non-binding referendum on our June 11th ballot that would ask citizens about that. So, Marie, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add or not.
Yeah, I think one of the things we talked about is whether it was going to be effective or not. I mean, whether we take, right now, we have to make a decision if we're going to exercise our right of first refusal. But, is it really gonna be effective, even if we spend the money on it? Is that really going to stop it from being built there? One of the things I thought we should also look at is maybe we want to look at the right of first refusal of some of that property in order to create a greater buffer zone between some of the residents' homes and the facility that might be built. So, there's one way of looking at it, is to look at the right of first refusal for the whole piece, which is, as everyone said, incredibly expensive. And is it really gonna make a difference? Is it just, they're gonna just move it to another location? Or, then, the, after we own the property, then the federal government could say, you know, they, you need to provide the easements anyways. So, then, we would have purchased this property, and it would not have made a difference to the residents in that area. So, you know, do we, I guess the question would be, do we want to further look into exercising our 61B rights? Should we have a subcommittee looking into what some of the possibilities are? We have 120 days to make the decision. Do we want to reach out and have a non-binding resolution to ask if the town really wants us to put resources towards discouraging the building of it at that specific location? Or, is this only a small group of people that feel that way? And if we hear from the town residents, we'll have a better idea of how much we should really be pushing or fighting its current location. Or, you know, as I said, is there any way we should be looking at mitigating the effects that will have on the residents in that neighborhood, which could be through 61B rights, or it could be through other bylaw changes? Right now, I think we've stepped back at it, but we have to make a decision when we are given the right of first refusal. I don't think we can just ignore it. If we do ignore it, then we are, we are actually saying no to the, we don't want to exercise our right, which might be the decision that we're gonna make.
Who determined that it could be 500 to 1,505?
The only thing I, this is something Mark wrote, but I think we don't know, because it's a matter of what the fair market value of the property is.
It's the agreement. We had our attorney look at this, and it's $2.7 million is the...
For the whole piece.
Yeah, and I'm reading her opinion here, and she doesn't say, you know, specifically, you can, you have to buy the whole, or you can buy only parts, but the way, the way she crafts her language, it does seem like it's, you have to exercise the terms of the option. I think the implication is in whole. But, I vote that it's maybe worth a follow-up with her, but it seems like you have to do all or not.
The issue for me right now is that if we want to get public input, we have a unique opportunity in June 11th to do that. And as we'll find with our next, our next agenda item, tonight's the night to put things on the ballot that we need to, because the ballot's gonna, you know, we've got to start putting, putting things on the ballot. And so, you know, it's, it is a non-binding referendum, clearly, Bill, we can tweak, tweak what it says here. The intent was to let people know it's not cheap, but also, people need to understand that it's, that it's not something we, that may, may in fact achieve whatever it is people want to achieve by, by doing this. But, without knowing that people are, you know, if we get this overwhelmingly rejected, we can know that, gee, there's, you know, there's no reason for us to spend a lot of town resources on it, as opposed to then, if it does pass, and depending on the percentage by which it does pass, we can more or less figure out how many resources we want to put on it, and how much we want to convolutedly get into the process. Richard?
Yeah, when does the final decision have to be made on the purchase of the property?
We have 120 days from April. She said it in her note, from April, May, June, July. It's like August.
Like August?
120 days from the beginning of April, right, so...
So, it was sometime in, but it, it was either July 31st or August...
Yeah, I think it was July.
3rd.
It's April 2nd is the notification date.
What's the date of notification?
April 2nd.
Yeah, but what's 120 days of July?
120 days from now.
2nd?
No, it's...
From April 2nd.
July, so July 2nd or more.
I think so.
So, my question is...
It's like July 31st.
Yeah.
So, what is the last day that we have to decide whether we want to put a non-binding resolution?
Today.
It is today.
Yeah, that's, that's why it's on the agenda for time.
How many, how many days, what's it, June, once the election? June 10?
June 11.
You don't have to actually exercise the option in 120 days. You just have to determine that you're going to.
Let me ask you, will you have enough time between, not you, you, will you have enough time between the referendum and the actual due date to do all this other research, for all these questions we had? Is there enough time?
There's no reason for us to wait till then to start doing the research.
You said you wanted to wait and get this referendum thing out of the way.
But, but we can start doing some preliminary requests.
Well, I agree. That's what I was asking.
It's the depth that we want to go to, Richard, that, you know, or, and/or the actual vote on exercising our rights, doesn't it?
Right. Because if it's simply, we pay $2.5 million, and they move it over another couple of feet and sell another one, we could end up having a $50 million dollar...
No, chase them around the towns, you're right.
Yeah.
Right, Tom?
Yeah, well, earlier this evening, Michelle Marantz was commenting how, you know, the city council of North Hampton, you know, took a vote on pipelines, and that the mayor, not the council, just to help you, but the mayor had an opinion. And so, putting this question on would really help inform us as a, as a select board, how, where people stand. I mean, I was kind of surprised that people wanted to buy, you know, this property and domain to put the DPW there, but people did want to. And maybe I'd be surprised that they did want to spend $2.7 million to stop this project. And I think the only way to do it is by putting it out, to see what they're gonna vote on.
The only concern is, we, we can't let them, this is, we have to say, do you want us to look into it and consider resources? Because it doesn't mean we're gonna stop it.
Right.
Yeah, but we can spend $2.5 million, and they put it on the other side of the clubhouse.
I'm sure that'll be discussed at our town meeting. We can always count on our town meeting to put everything on...
No, this isn't gonna come up in town meetings.
Oh, that's right, it wouldn't be. You already have them.
Hold on, Stephen, what were you guys...
Or worse, you buy the land, they file an action with FERC to preempt, and now, it's on our...
We own it.
2.4 acres of land that we paid $2.7 million for. And then, and the only person who's really harmed in all of that...
Is us.
Is the club, is Long Meadow Country Club. And I think that, I guess what I want, and I think with the non-binding resolution, the only thing I'll say, and this is really not, it's really not an operational thing, so I should probably just keep it to myself, but if you're going to ask, don't ask the question if you don't really want the answer, because I don't, what I would hate to see the board in the position of is getting to a point by getting legal guidance from the people who work for the, for the board and the town, saying, "This is a terrible idea, but now you've got this referendum saying we want you to do it," because the general public is kind of voting, you know, without the, the kind of privileged information that we have. And so, now, at the end of the day, you say, "Well, we decided not to do it because of our guidance we're getting from our legal team." And then, the town's like, "Oh, then why'd you ask us the question?" That's the only situation, because it can be destabilizing for the community.
It can, but I think Tom had the right answer, is, you know, other than, you know, a strong, opinionated group of people, the pipeline awareness group, we don't know, I don't know how 11,000 voters in town of Long Meadow feel. And before I go to, to commit $2.6 million, or not commit $2.6 million, it would certainly help me to know. Now, if they say, "Yeah, we want you to buy it," and it turns out that our attorneys say, "You're throwing away $2.6 million," or, and the worst situation, you know, you buy it from Long Meadow Country Club, and then Tennessee Gas Pipeline buys it from you, and the only one who's hurt is though, it's not even the Long Meadow Country Club that's hurt, because they got their money from us. So, it, it turns out the same. So, why, why wouldn't we go for this non-binding referendum? I guess, Stephen, even if we did it, Long Meadow couldn't necessarily, may not necessarily be hurt.
Because we'd have to pay somebody.
Well, the issue is, there's some questions we don't know. So, can we do a partial buy? These are things, so I would almost want to look at a different way of phrasing it, because the question is, do, does the town want us to consider putting financial resources towards this, whether it is investigating the 61B purchase or bylaw changes? Because some of the bylaw changes we are looking to do, we are now setting ourselves up for, is this, are we gonna get pushback? Are we gonna have to hire attorneys to support a bylaw change of some kind? So, the question is, how strongly do people feel about arguing against the current placement of that? And what can we do as a town to mitigate that if we can't stop it?
Well, Marie, they're all good questions, and I don't know the answer to any of them. I saw this strictly after our last conversation, as a means of getting the tenor of those in town who choose to vote on June 11th. You know, you're never gonna get the tenor of everybody in town, but those who choose to vote will give us a better sense than the, the opinions that we get now, which are clearly, you know, from the people who are asking us to oppose this pipeline. To some degree, since I personally don't, don't think this is a great idea for the town, but that's my opinion, my personal opinion, is I think this also lets Tennessee Gas Pipeline, puts them on notice that we're not rolling over. We're gonna find out, you know, all the rights that we have as a select board. And we said that early on, we wanted to find out what our rights are, and this is one of them, and we're gonna maintain the ability to, to exercise it. And that's all this says, is, you know, maintain the ability to exercise our, that right under 61, granted us under 61B. Stephen?
Just a question, Marie, how do you anticipate, if we just, if the board decided to do this, to exercise the option, how do you anticipate paying for it?
I have no clue.
We would have to probably, but that, it would probably have to be...
Certainly not gonna come out of money we got in our treasury.
So, you would have to have a special town meeting, and it would have to be either operationalization, or...
Stephen, you weren't, you weren't here at the last meeting, but in executive session, we talked about that. And the answer was then, what we're saying now. We don't know, but, you know, we weren't prepared to, because we could have at the last meeting, call for a special town meeting within the current town meeting that's coming up, to ask for that authorization, because we didn't even know if people wanted to do it. So, we thought the approach would be better to get this decision first, and if you, because you're right, it, it's not gonna be cheap, and we don't have that money sitting in our checking account. It would be some kind of a, of a, of a taxes assessment, probably an override.
The other thing is that generally, unless there's some special rule about this, rights of first refusal, as you say, you have to match, you can't say, "I'm exercising my right of first refusal, I'm gonna pay half." You have to also meet the timeline. You can't say, "Well, we'll raise the money next year." You know, it's over, right?
Yeah, I mean, this, this isn't the end, this is the beginning, I think. So, we consider that. Anyway, is there any other...
Well, do we have to decide on the wording tonight, or...
Pretty much so, yeah. I mean, that's why, you know, I, I put this draft out, you know, Marie, I know you saw it, and if somebody, the, the first paragraph here is certainly, it's, it's kind of like the italicized part underneath the Warren article. We can change that, modify it. The vote, the non-binding vote is, shall the town of Long Meadow exercise its rights under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 61B, for first right of refusal relative to Tennessee Gas Pipeline's agreement to purchase an easement over four parcels of land currently zoned for recreational use and retain its uses open space? And it should just be a yes or no. We should retain, we should exercise our right, or no, we shouldn't, as a non-binding referendum? Everything else is, is preliminary to that.
And I just think there's something that should be stated in there, that purchase of the land does not guarantee its use.
And number could be a lot higher.
Yeah.
We don't, that's, that's the thing.
So, we have to let people know that this is a step that doesn't mean, a non-binding resolution, too, I would say, to let the select board and town government investigate or move forward with the possibility, because as Stephen says, we don't want it to look like, "We're going to do this, and we're gonna stop the Tennessee Pipeline coming, this facility coming in," because, right, that doesn't guarantee it. But, do, do they want us to stand up and try to have better control over, maybe by owning this parcel? Maybe, we'd have to check with our attorneys, is it going to give us more options, regulations and control on it?
I, I agree with you, Marie, you know...
And can we give better buffers to our neighbors?
Coming out of our, coming out of our last meeting, there was a question of, will somebody draft a proposal for a non-binding referendum? You know, we can't do it as a group of three or more because of open meeting law, so I did something, sent it to you, you sent it back to me. This is what we came up with. If we don't like it, let's change it, but we've got probably 15 minutes to do that before we run out of steam.
Yeah, because I think that, you know, it's a kind of a data collection. And so, when you have variability in responses, you can really tell if you've measured something to a degree that you can see what the difference is. And a question like this, unfortunately, just says, you want to keep this zoned recreational use, and I think most people in town are gonna say, "Oh, yes, of course." And so, if we get all these yeses, it's, it really doesn't put the issue on there. Because the issue is really, do people feel that, you know, they want to have gas, you know, increased and have pressure equalized? I mean, one part is that to say, you know, do you feel utilizing gas as a, as a way to heat your home, or, or heat your hot water? And do you think, you know, Long Meadow should be involved in having the station that would improve services in our area and in Springfield? Or, would you say, "No, we don't want that?"
See, I was hoping this wouldn't become a referendum on fossil fuel usage, but rather a referendum on the land. But, but I think if we make it a referendum on the land, those who want to extend it to a general referendum on, is fossil fuel usage good? Should we promote that? Should we go to solar or renewable energy and not? They'll, they'll read it that way. But, from our perspective, we only, you know, we, we can't go after fossil fuel usage. We can't go, say, "Natural gas is bad, you know, solar is good, let's get rid of that." All we can say is, should we exercise our rights to go at, to try to buy this land because we have the right to do that, or should we not? If nobody in town wants us to do it, you know, we're not gonna spin our, spin our wheels. But, if the people in town want us to do it, you know, and maybe we say, with no guarantee that it will be successful, maybe that's the phrase that needs to be in there.
Well, I think at the end, you have to say, not for recreational, it says, "This will not guarantee the use of the land for open space." As you say, to keep it for open space, this will not guarantee the use of the land for open space, but still could, but the energy could still, could still be granted the easement.
See, I'd rather say with no, with no guarantee of success. Because that's, that's just kind of tells you, you know, that's, because we don't know what would happen, other than, you know, should we, should we pursue the, the purchase of this land under our 61B rights, even if we don't think, even with no guarantee of success? Or, should we say, "Look, without a guarantee of success, don't, don't waste your time." And, because even if you did it, we don't want it. That's, that's the question. The people in town don't want it, we shouldn't be doing it. And that's why this no guarantee of success is the great equalizer here, in my opinion. You know, Stephen, and that answers your question of, of, you know, you ask them for, to do it, and then you can't do it because, you know, it's not gonna work. But, we, you know, we told you upfront, there was no guarantee of success. We just wanted to know if you wanted us to pursue it. There's a lot of resources involved, some monetary and a lot of non-monetary resources. And before we do that, the people want us to do it, period.
So, there are some changes I would definitely make to it. One is the second paragraph is, shall the town of Long Meadow consider exercising its rights? Not that we will exercise our rights, we'll consider exercising its rights under the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 61B for the right of first refusal relative to the agreement to purchase, it's not purchase and easement of over four parcels of land currently zoned for recreational use. This will not guarantee the use of the land for open space. Because it still could be, we could still be forced to give the easement to Tennessee Pipeline, depending on where the federal government...
Yeah, we, we, I hope we have all those answers.
Yeah. By the time we finally get to it.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, you were about to ask...
Well, I was going to say, you know, I'm looking at the last paragraph, and after it says, "Zoned for recreational use and..." Because basically, I think what we're having is, is an attempt to dissuade the gas company from further, from moving forward with this expansion for its customers. Because that's really what we're asking them to do, is to dissuade the gas company from moving forward with this expansion for its customers. And, you know, I think we have to just tell it like it is. Because that's the only reason people would vote to stop this, is to stop the expansion. I don't know if people...
Yeah, it doesn't guarantee...
But I think dissuade is a too weak a word. The attempt is to prohibit the, or to prevent the gas company from using this for their expansion. That's our effort, but we don't know that we can do that, Stephen.
So, I guess if I could analogy, and again, I think, I think it just, it makes, I think it makes your lives more difficult doing it this way. And like I said, I just don't, if we want the community's input before we expend resources, the only resource that I can see really being expended to get the community to make a specific decision on a specific course of action would be the scheduling of a special town meeting for an appropriation of some description. And the only reason I say that is because I liken this almost to the special town meeting we had for the school committee recall. There were a number of people in Long Meadow who showed up to that meeting, who read the petition, researched what, you know, recall would do, understood that it had to go to the legislature, and that it wasn't actually recalling the...
Current board.
The current board. And then there were a number of people who went there because it was, in effect, a referendum on the superintendent. I was there, and I have a sense of what I thought the bigger number of people on either side of that was. And that, I think, is what you're going to get in the vote here, because we're not, we're not, because of the, the one thing that has been said consistently, and I, even in our meetings with Columbia and Tennessee, we get some information, we've given out what we've had, but not complete, because they're not, they tell us they're not there yet. So, we don't have great details on what's happening, and we don't have a great opportunity then to educate the community on what this is really all about. And so, they make an easy vote on this referendum, non-binding, and that puts you and really all of us in a position of having to make an even more difficult decision down the line. But again, I think it's, I agree with you, Mark, that it's important to get a sense from the town of what they want to do. But I just, I'm concerned that this is going to, you know, not have the clarifying, you know, impact that we want to have on your decision-making.
But I don't see a way to more timely, yet as precise a response.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the issue. Because this would give us on June 11th, a decision point to move forward, where we have until July 31st to actually exercise the right. Now, the letter from our attorney said, "We don't have to pay the money by July 31st," or whatever that magic date is, "We just have to exercise the right by that day." If I recall, that's what her letter said. And so, it gives us plenty of time to, you know, if we decide this is what we want to do, and we have six weeks after June 11th to go start going through a little bit more depth, you know, at that, at some point, we then put together a town meeting and say, because we can still put together a time meeting and says, "Okay, now how are we going to pay for it, folks? You're the ones who wanted us to do it, how are we going to pay for it?" You know, hopefully by then, we'll have two or three suggestions, I would suspect.
I was going to ask, what happens if we exercise the right and the town meeting doesn't approve the money?
We exercise the right contingent upon the town, on getting the money from the town.
Yeah.
But is that going to be a legal position?
I don't know. I'm not an attorney, Paul, but that's a good question.
What about, what about, I'm sorry, you're right, I wasn't here to discuss this last time, so it's kind of a rehash, but just as an alternative, and again, if it ends up on a non-binding referendum, it's a non-binding thing, I do think you tweak the language so people are more clear, right, about what they're voting on. Like I said, we can draw our own conclusions as to what people think they're going to be voting on versus what the thing actually says. But what about a public forum? Like a select board forum on this subject? And if you, now, you know, you're going to get, some of what you're going to get, you are at the siting board hearing.
Right, that's what we're going to get.
Right. But if you, so if you get something that's more compelling and more specific, and I don't mean specific, it's, if you get something that moves the needle in terms of the actual expenditure of this fund, of these funds for this site, and whether or not you're going to achieve the goal, well, the other thing is, what is the goal? Is the goal to stop the project? What is the goal of the board?
Yes. Well, you hit Richard.
Richard, go ahead.
Yeah, the more I listen, the more I don't see a reason for the resolution. I'm not sure it says one thing or the other, because I know the special interest is going to stuff ballots on this one. I feel pretty, pretty well assured that that's what they will do.
Wait a second, I can't take exception to stuff ballots.
No, it's not, Mark, they're going to get, they're going to bring out the people and put the ballots in favor of the motion. That's what they're going to do. And I'm not sure that that totally reflects the feelings of our people in town. We don't have enough time to educate them, unless we're going to have an educational program. And that's what bothers me, because you're right, they're going to walk in to a $2 million bond issue, and they're going to say, "What are you talking about?" And all hell's going to break loose in that meeting. So, I'm not sure that there's as much as you want to gain by this. I don't see the difference. I don't see any difference whether it's there or not. We still move forward with it. Does this board want to move forward with this action, or don't they? That's the question. We don't need the people to tell us, because that vote could be, like Stephen alluded to, that vote could be very biased in a direction, and it may not reflect what the community really wants, Mark.
But unlike a town meeting, a referendum vote, binding or not, is far more generally representative, and I think less likely to quote-unquote "stuff the ballot," which is...
Well, then, why don't we just sign the thing and quit talking about it, Dan? I mean, I don't see, I don't see the value in it. As much conversations we put, I don't see the value.
The value in what, in discussing it?
Yeah, because I don't think it makes any difference, personally.
I think we're going to get a broader, a broader cross-section of the town weighing in on the, on the issue.
We, on this board, we don't even know about this issue. I expect the people to know about this issue. We've said time after time after time, "We don't know anything about these plans." All we're hearing is special interest groups come before us and tell us that this is evil. I said before, I personally don't know anything about their plans. I would love to have an independent party come in this room and educate me on what we're supposed to be doing, making this decision.
Well, we can do that for the whole town of Long Meadow.
But there's not, I don't think there's a member here that can give you any in-depth information on this thing to the point of making a decision for our community. I may be wrong.
So, my response is, to the extent that you're correct, then the way to make sure we cover our bases is to get input from the folks in town. Because if we, if we wait, there is no other way to do it, other than have a special interest group, or have, call it a special town meeting, just to get purpose. To me, this is just such a clean, unique way of getting people's opinions on a non-binding referendum. You know, if you show up to vote, you get something to say. If you want to, if you want to, you know, get out the vote for the way you want, you know, I'll tell you, we're going to have people getting out the vote to vote yes on question one, which is likely to be bonding for Wolf Swamp Road School. So, you know, that, that's a population very different from the Pipeline population, and they're going to be at the polls.
One more statement, then I won't say another word. I would agree with you 100% if you could answer seven or eight questions for me, but we do not have that information available. So, I consequently say, this referendum vote doesn't mean much to me, because we don't have the answers. It may mean nothing. We may not have any rights after this. So, I say it comes back to the fact of what we want to present to the public. We're presenting, we're presenting something to the public on a ballot that may mean nothing.
Or maybe something, Marie.
The problem of not knowing what's going to be there is because there is no plan yet on what's going to be there. I think when you read through all the letters, and one of my questions to the chair is going to be the letters we received, are there's public information, can we post those now? But the process and the whole, through the process, it's changing. We know what Tennessee Pipeline's doing, because they're telling us. But what they're not being told exactly is what Columbia Gas is doing, which is 80% of the project. And now Columbia Gas is saying, "Oh, by the way, we're changing things here, we're not going to, we might not be doing the loop, we're doing all of this." So, these, it's a moving target. So, we will have to have forums, we will have to explain to people, "We can't guarantee we're going to stop this. We can't guarantee that's the right thing to do." But by you saying that you want us to consider using town resources, you will now say, as leaders of the community, "Go and look at it and see what you think is the best thing to do." But I think we might find that maybe the people of Long Meadow are saying, "We're not that worried about this."
And are we content to stop then, though? Are we content to stop at that point? What about if we find out information that really is harmful about this thing, between now and then?
We very well could.
That's what I'm saying, we don't have that information.
But the difference is, Richard, at that point, we're not going to pursue $2.7 million to exercise 61B rights. That's all this talk is. Because it sounds like...
It's a non-binding resolution.
Wait a second, let me finish, because you, Marie said, "We may find out that the people aren't, you know, aren't opposed to this."
That's right.
Okay? If the people aren't opposed to it, I can't, if the majority of the people are not opposed to this going in, I can't believe we can get a majority to approve $2.7 million.
See, that's where I disagree with you, because we don't have all the information that says this thing's either good, bad, or indifferent. And once we had it, then we educate the public. And we provide the leadership that's required to take them to the polls.
But we're not going to get that in a sufficient, timely manner.
Then, are you saying you want to do a special town meeting rather than doing a ballot?
No, no, I'm, I, Marie, we'll just vote on it. It does, I don't think it matters. It doesn't do anything.
Well, okay.
It matters to me, I know it doesn't matter to you, but it matters to me, because I think we'll get a much broader, like I said, a broader constituency, or, anyway.
Finish the wording.
The other change, though, is, you're saying 500 to 1.5.
So, what I've done is I changed that. Okay, so I've changed that. The last sentence would say, "The cost for the town to exercise 61B rights over these parcels has not been precisely determined, but may be as high as $2.7 million." Okay, Bill, you're good with that?
Okay, I thought it was precisely determined.
No, because we don't know if we can do a partial purchase either. You said you don't know that.
We should follow up with our attorney, then.
Well, that's what I had, Chris, that you were at the last, we asked at the last meeting, what have, what are our variabilities? And so, we don't know that at this point in time.
Even if it's $2.7 million, I mean, we're covered under this, the comment. Then the last one says, shall the town, here's the non-binding referendum, "Shall the town of Long Meadow consider exercising its rights under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 61B for first right of refusal relative to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline's agreement to purchase an easement over four parcels of land currently zoned for recreational use? This, this purchase will not guarantee the use of the land for open space."
Yeah.
Okay? Can't be more clear than that.
But I think, I don't know, I still, Marie, did you have something else that you had added earlier?
No, I said, I think if we get a feeling, if people want us to pursue this, which is a really strong step, then if we find that this is not really the best way for us to go, and we decide we want to do a zoning change that could be challenged in court, then I think that would give us an understanding of the, there's the political will to move to that direction, too. But I think that's really the option that's currently put in front of us is, we have to decide on what we're doing with the 61B rights.
All right. Because that other part, what do you guys think about, like, adding on that part at the end, where we would say, as, because basically, we're asking the, exercise its right as an attempt to dissuade the gas company from moving forward to expand service to its customers.
Because I don't know what's going to dissuade them.
No, but, but really, the issue is, you either want the gas company to be able to build this, or you don't.
We don't know.
I want to know what they want.
That's the problem, Tom.
And it's not, it's...
No, no, but, I mean, I wouldn't want people to think it's between gas, it's, should we, is it about recreation, or is it about the gas company?
You're not going to do recreation and do all that golf course, anyway.
Well, no, open space.
Right, just open space, yeah.
It's not about open space and recreation. It's about limiting the gas company.
It's not just...
I think we, I don't know, I mean, that's why, I, because if we just say, I think people will all vote for this, and then we could, like, you know, Stephen's saying, we could be in a pickle, because they'll just say, "Oh, yeah, we don't want to, we're with that." But, but some people who use gas and might think gas is the least expensive way to heat homes, might say, "Yeah, why should we limit the gas company?" But if it isn't clear in this statement...
But, but we're not trying to limit the use of gas or limit the gas company, we're just trying to prevent this land from being used for the proposed purpose. That's all this would do, to limit this land to be used for this proposed purpose. It has nothing to say, "We want to shut down the gas, we want to dissuade the gas company." If the gas company wants to continue their project and do it somewhere beside on this land, come back and talk to us about it. That's my approach.
Because the purchase of an easement, I guess, so this whole thing will be there, I guess, maybe it's all together, it'll make sense, I don't know.
Anyway, at this point, we've been talking about this for 25 minutes. Is there, is there a motion to put this on the ballot as a non-binding referendum?
So moved.
Okay, and Jackie, I can email it to you, the way I've got it, you don't have it, but it's, "Shall the town of Long Meadow consider exercising its rights under Mass. General Law Chapter 61B for first right of refusal relative to Tennessee Gas Pipeline's agreement to purchase an easement over four parcels of land currently zoned for recreational use? This pursuit of 61B rights will not guarantee the use of the land for open space." Okay, that's, there's a motion that are second.
Second.
Motion's made by Bill Low and seconded by Marie Angelides. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Jackie, I'll email this to you. And this, again, is a non-binding referendum.
As a procedural note, we never had comments, period, by a select board.
We'll get to it.
Just letting you know, we flew by there.
You're right.
And, I'm sorry, the first, the last line in the first paragraph is, you changed it...
$2.7 million.
It could, has not precisely been determined, but may be up to...
Maybe as hot, much as $2.7 million.
Okay, okay.
Right, that's what it says, okay? So, the next item on the agenda is another ballot question. This one, though, is different. And Paul, since this is yours, why don't you take over, explain why we're doing this tonight, and what it would do?
Article 16 on the annual town meeting deals with the Wolf Swamp Fields. The Wolf Swamp Fields warrant article, as it's currently written, is contention upon an override vote, or a debt exclusion vote. And the language that is proposed in front of you is the language that would go on the ballot for that override vote.
You recall, both the DPW and the senior center did the same thing.
High school did the same thing.
Yeah, there's no amount, as...
No amount of anything there.
Yep, then you've done that, so...
I moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, now, this will be on the ballot, and if it doesn't, for some miraculous reason, doesn't pass the town meeting, it'll stay on the ballot, but it'll have no effect, since it did stand.
It's going to stay on the ballot, and whether it passes or fails, it'll have no effect, because there's still no authorization to vote.
Okay, so motions made by Marie and seconded by Bill to place this on the, on the election ballot for June 11. All the, any other, any questions about it? All those in favor? Any opposed? So, the vote passes 5 to 0, okay? And the next item on our agenda is town sewer regulations, a discussion, and Mr. Foster, this was an item you requested, so if you can take this lead...
Take the next couple hours?
We have an executive session.
You're gonna contain yourself and just sit there and relax? Okay. True, I did, I asked to be put on because I was approached by a citizen in reference to this, and I polled the existing regulations, and it looks like that the select board never actually approved rules and regulations governing public sewage systems in our town. I got the fallacy from DPW, and there was references in here to town charter and a three-board selectmen, or three-select-person board. It looks like it took place about the time when the charter was coming in and everything was changing. The, the main, the main item in here, it deals with the maintenance on lines. Tom, I'm gonna use you as an ordinary citizen, I know, I know where you live, and you have a, you have, what, a 70 or 80, maybe 100-foot right-of-way in front of your house?
At least, yeah.
At least 100-foot right-of-way. And it's got, it's populated with town trees?
Yeah.
And your sewage line runs out to there, too?
Oh, yeah. I had to replace it because the town went into it.
Oh, well, this is unfair, then, because you're not an ordinary citizen, you've already been erect over the coals.
That's right.
Okay? The question is, and I don't, I don't know if everybody's aware or not, but the way it's presently written, and by the way, a lot of communities across America have it exactly the same way, but there's a lot of other communities that don't have it the same way. If you go on the internet and you can coast up, you can find every variation. I've lived in communities that it came up to the house and sewage line, I've lived in communities where it came to my property line, and that was not the easement, but it came to the actual property line after the easement. In our case, if you live, say, for instance, where Tom lives, and the sewage main is out on Long Meadow Street at that point, or it's in the median right at Long Meadow Street, Tom has 100-foot of easement in there, which is town property, he cannot develop, he can't do anything with it, and it has two rows of mature trees growing there. Your home, I guess, was built in the 1800s, late 1800s, early 1900s?
It's 100 years.
So it had terracotta lines in there, so the root infestation from these trees there that you can't cut, you can't trim, you can't do anything about the trees.
Right.
So, but when it came up to the fact that your root system plugged, or the root system from these trees finally plugged the sewage line, you found out, likely unknownst to you at that time, that you were responsible for that sewage line all the way from your house, all the way to the main.
120 feet away.
Right, 120-foot away.
That's where they found the coals.
And most of that land you couldn't do anything about because it was easement land.
It's right by the curb.
I don't think a lot of people are aware of that, I think it's, it's something that just slaps you in the face when it happens. And again, preference, a lot of communities have this, just that way, and a lot of them don't, and there's a lot of debates going on. Especially, the debates are gonna increase as the sewage lines get older. The more debate up in the northern climate, where you have older communities, where you have terracotta lines, which are extremely prone to this. By the way, the same thing happened to my son.
Oh, yeah.
And the blockage was where that enormous tree was taken down about four years ago, six-foot in from the main, there was a total blockage, cost him $1,000 to get rid of a blockage, that had nothing to do with anything that they had done as a resident, or neglect, or anything else. So that was the thing, Mark, that was the point of bringing it up, that we will have to act on a policy sometime this summer, I would imagine. But I wanted to introduce it to the board in case, I don't know, was everybody aware of this? Mark, you were. Marie, were you aware of what-
You told me.
I told you, were you aware of it before then?
No, not at all.
Okay, Bill, were you aware of it?
Just had it happen this year.
Okay, so then you became aware of it, okay. So it was one of those surprise, right?
Well, actually, I was happy about it because the insurance picked it up. Otherwise, the town would have to, and I felt better with my insurance.
That apparently was rare, the insurance picks it up. By the way, there was a lot of communities that offer insurance policies, or not communities, there's a lot of companies offer insurance policies for these mains. And what I would like to do in the next month, month and a half, Mark, is I'll, I'm gonna do a lot more research, I'm gonna present something back to the board, just for discussion purposes. Until then, we just go on the way we are. I mean, we have a policy that we've been using, but it's, it's never been voted on and approved by the board, but I guess it's precedent says it's there and it's working.
The same thing happened to me in Springfield with a home I owned, and Springfield dug it out, and they charged me for the pipe, the clay pipe.
Right.
Which was just a few hundred dollars.
Right.
Which was pretty reasonable, but, you know.
Almost every community deals with it differently. And I think, I think what I, what I'm concerned with is the fairness in the policy.
Yeah.
That's what seems to be missing, is the fairness in whether you've got a seven-foot right-of-way, or whether you've got 150-foot right-of-way.
Yeah.
There just doesn't seem to be a well-thought-out thing on there, and of course, the Long Meadow Street is where the worst cases are, because that's where the old homes are.
Yeah.
And then, and you creep up through Maple Street, and when you get off to where Stephen lives and back up in there, what, your house in the 70s, Stephen?
Built?
Yeah.
Built in the 50s.
It was in the 50s, okay, well, you were still likely pretty good, you got cast iron lines in there. You get away from the terracottas, and then you likely don't have as many problems on the cast iron, so the event may never come up. But I would like to come back and present some, just some general information, so the board can at least address this, and by that point, we may be talking about having Pete come in to sit and talk. I'd like to run up some estimates on what it is, I've got a lot of figures on what it costs other communities on their estimates to, to have this. You may find out that it's a very small upcharge that you can put on the monthly sewage bill that covers whatever this charge would be anticipated for the rest of the life of our community. It's not, it's not something that can't be thought of, it just needs a little time to be, to put into the process.
Just, Rich, I have no problem with doing that, the only question I have is that I'm just concerned, just would like to know if there is a similar document that was adopted by the Springfield, by the Long Meadow Water and Sewer Commission prior to the charter change, that essentially was grandfathered in, and this was intended to supersede it, but-
This was it.
But, no, but there, there must be a document that was approved by the Water, not us as the Water-
Oh, you mean the Old Water-
The Old Water and Sewer-
Could've been, Mark.
So that there is a, you know, that's my point, is there, I assume that there's a policy out there that we go, I mean, we're not just making it up as we go along, it's just that it hasn't been adopted by the reconstituted Water and Sewer Commission, which is the select board since 1984.
Right, well, I think that's what we're talking about.
If they broke, don't fix it, so, but I, you know, I'd be interested in knowing if that in fact happened.
A little research can hurt us.
Stephen?
I guess I would just, for whatever comes up, I mean, it's, you're talking hundreds of thousands or millions of additional costs each year.
I doubt, it's not in the millions, Stephen, you only got 5,000 homes.
Um, but what's a thousand times 5,000?
Well, it's not even that, it's what's your frequency of failures.
Right.
And also, when you get, when you get back in the outreach of the town, you're not gonna have problems when you're 80s and up, they're all cast iron pipes and getting in PVC, and the core gets down to the old sections of town, it's where the real problems are at.
I, every town I've been in has it the same way, and I view it no differently than the clearing of sidewalks. I don't have a sidewalk, so I don't have that extra snow removal burden, but people-
I do.
Yeah, but you do. And it's just, it's just something you get when you buy a house, and I guess, like I said, I think that there's a side to this story that I think would be, would have pretty dramatic and negative consequences on the Department of Public Works' ability to meet the demand.
Not if they were funded for it, though, right?
And staffed for it.
And staffed.
Well, not say staffed, they're gonna do it by contract.
Maybe.
I would imagine they'll do, you'll have, you'll have a guy come through as a contractor, you'll be on-call, and he'll do these things. I'm not even sure we shouldn't be offering that service, anyway, with the, with the older homes we have, or at least have qualified contractors set up. You know, the question comes, you don't own your power line, it goes to your house. You don't own the cable line, it goes to your house.
But I gotta-
You don't own the gas line, it goes to your house.
If it fails, I have to pay for it.
No, you don't.
So, so in the 19, in the 2011 storm, I learned everything you need to know about your power lines. And it goes from the electric company, Eversource owns the power line, from the street to your house, to the junction on your roof, and where it ties in and then goes down your roof, that's all yours, because there are people who, with snow and tree falling on it, it had pulled away from their house, the conduit that, and Eversource came back and said, you go get an electrician and you fix that and put it in your house, and then we'll re, and they went around detaching wires and said, when that house is prepared, we'll come reattach it. So it was literally a combination of the two.
Water-
One is to your house, but it's not into your meter. You own from the house-
Right.
Into your meter, so it's not-
Water and sewage systems seem to be the only two systems that you ever see this debate across the country on. There's never been a debate on gas, electric, or cables, or some of that stuff, and I don't know why, personally.
Because of the voltages.
Yeah, it could be, but, you know, I mean, you're dealing, sewage, can you imagine you're dealing with sewage lines with terracotta joints? You might, you imagine how much sewage is going into the ground?
Um, yeah, but I can't create a clog in a power line to my house by not grinding up food before I put it down the drain, or putting, you know, fats, oils, and greases, I mean, you can, some of this, some of this can be, and I don't believe the conversation, I'm just saying that there's-
It can be self-induced, right?
Yeah, this is a big deal, is all I'm saying, this isn't, is a big deal.
Right, okay.
Well, I think the town has the equipment to scope it and see what's in there, and they will clean it out for you. They never have a problem if you have a clogged line. The town will come immediately and, you know, road router, they'll clean it out.
The town doesn't-
We jet the mains, what happens is, if somebody has a clogged line, like, when it was Scott, the first thing the jetter does is they go out, they find two manholes, and they jet the main to determine where the blockage is, and if they, and there have been times where they've determined the blockage is in the main, and then they clear it, or have to dig it up or do whatever, but if they shoot water down one manhole and it comes out the other, they know that the block is in the lateral.
Right.
But they used to-
But sometimes, sometimes they'll occasionally see what they can do if they're close to the lateral.
And this one, this, all they would've had done was six-foot on this one, they did solid roots, but anyway.
Okay.
It's either here or there.
We're gonna continue this discussion, and it wasn't for anything other than to start the discussion.
Right, it was just to start the discussion.
Okay, so-
And it may, it may stop right here.
At this point, I would be, love to go back to select board comments.
Thank you.
So, are there anybody, does anybody have any select board comments?
I have.
Mr. Foster, go ahead.
I have one. Ladies and gentlemen, this week, you may have noticed a lot of people in white trucks digging near your power poles in the community. They were all over us like red ants on a sugar pile. These guys are under contract, basically, I guess, to Eversource, or could've even been the cable company, to do this every 10 years.
Or Verizon.
Or Verizon, the company, dig down on each pole every 10 years and inspect them for termites and for soundness. And you may notice that they were tapping them on them with a hammer, well, that's sounding the pole to see if it's solid sounding, and in my case, they actually did drill, put two pilot holes way down into the pole, and they actually dropped in some insecticide tablets, and, you know, so they put a piece, they put a piece of paper around a lot, and well, the reason the paper's there is they treated the base of that pole, it went on about 18 inches, and then they treated the pole, and they wrapped the paper to keep it from leaching back into the soils. It is a 10-year program, and I can't find anybody yet that saw them here 10 years ago, so I don't know whether it's just started or not. I yield to anybody who's been here for more than 10 years, but if you see that happening, that's not our people, the beautiful white trucks, there's license plates from all over the United States, it's the manufacturer of the, of the, of the people that make the poles, it's OSMOS. Very professional crews, well-organized, and doing a smash-up job. I mean, they were really pounding on a lot of poles in one day, it was amazing how fast they were moving through the town. Stephen, did you have any word of this coming in town? Yeah?
I think that got started when I, during school vacation week, so until you just said that, I didn't know anything about it. Now, I hadn't asked, what's, what's the deal with the white paint around all the poles?
Yeah.
I actually thought that that may have potentially been part of our-
Audit, that's what I thought.
Um, but, yeah, no, I mean, that's, when they're not excavating in the road-
Yeah.
They really have no reason to, they're, they're working in the easement area, so they have no reason to ask us for, check in with us.
No, I was just, as a public information, I thought they would've checked in, but they didn't, but anyway, they're doing a bang-up job, but that's what it is, folks, and that's all the comments I have, Mark.
Thank you. Anybody else have comments, Tom?
Well, I just, I went to a birthday party for Vanessa O'Brien, who turned 100, and, you know, I went in there, and she stood up and talked to me for a while, and then I got tired, so I sat down, and she sat down, and, and we talked, and, so, you know, she still works over there. And I said, so, it's your 100th birthday, did you take the day off today? And she says, oh, no, I worked in the morning. And I'm thinking, this woman's unbelievable. Um, you know, I just, she's an inspiration to a lot of us. I've never met a 100-year-old person who's that healthy and full of life, I mean, she's got a lot of years in her, she, she may work for another 10, I think, I don't know, but it was really a pleasure, you know, there are a few benefits to this job, and that's one of them, to meet someone like her at 100, who's so full of energy, or, you know, working and healthy, and, so, I enjoyed that.
Thank you. Any other comments, Marie?
And Mark, you're gonna be doing the Golden Kane tomorrow.
Right.
Or no, tomorrow, Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday will be-
And do you remember the person, the lady's name?
Yeah, it's Anna.
Anna Smith.
Anna Smith, yeah.
And how old is Anna?
I don't know.
She's the oldest one in town.
Yes.
I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, she's over 100.
She's gotta be 102, she's gotta be-
105?
Five?
105, anyway, yeah, that's Wednesday afternoon.
Well, Anna's not listening when we just said 105.
Shouldn't be giving out people's ages. Okay, thank you, and any other comments? So, at this point, I'm gonna entertain, in a moment, a motion to move it to executive session, I just want to explain to, because we are gonna return it to open session, I think people ought to learn, hear what that's about. So, one of the topics of discussion is going to be a tentative agreement that's been worked through a union contract between the town manager and our clerical union, and although we'll discuss it, and if, if we see fit to ratify it, we would have to go into open session to do that, and so we will come out of open session, we will not be televised, but if we do that, we'll announce it at our, at our next meeting that we do that. So that's the reason why we, you know, are reserving the right to resume into, into open session, I just wanted people to know that. The other item is gonna be the, as it says here, duck strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel relative to a interim town manager, so, and I guess it's the worst-kept secret in town here, but I would be remiss, as part of our select board comments, to not congratulate Stephen on his potential pending, hopeful